Perfect. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. It's 6:00 PM on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, and we'll call the session of West Hans Regional Municipality Council to order. Sorry, committed a whole to order. Begin the evening with attendance. Clerk Snare, we have Quorum, One Regret, Councillor Morton this evening, and Councillor Ivey just stepped out for about five minutes there. So we do have Quorum. What was that? Oh, and Deputy Mayor as well. Sorry. Jeez. Approve the agenda. Dashboard items are in there circulated earlier, council. If there's no additions or deletions, we will take the agenda approved. All right. Any declarations of the conflict of interest this evening? Seeing nobody. Perfect. We are in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral and ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. These lands are governed by the Treaties of Peace and Friendship signed in 1726. We're all treaty people and have responsibilities to each other in this land. West Hans Regional Municipality also recognizes that African Nova Scotians are distinct people whose histories, legacies, and contributions have enriched that part of Mi'kmaq known as Nova Scotia for over 400 years. Are there any other announcements this evening, councillor? We have a few in the audience tonight. We do have an exit on both your left and your right. If in case a fire alarm does go off, make your way out into the hallway and to my left, your right, just into the parking lot there is the muster station. Be safe, everybody. Also, we are recording on YouTube for anybody who does wish to watch later on or at home. Anybody in the audience, please refrain from recording on your devices, just in respect for everybody in the audience as well. Councillor Remy?
Just to let everybody know, Mayor, I've been having trouble with my lower back, so I may have to stand up during the meeting. I just didn't want anybody to think I was being rude or anything.
No hostilities, eh?
Just wanted to let you know.
We have Staff Sergeant Nugent here, who we're introducing next. So he's carrying. But and with that, we do have our new Staff Sergeant, Ed Nugent. We just want to introduce him to the community. If you want to come up, Staff Sergeant, introduce yourself. He is local here and excited to work with council and the community in making us a lot safer. So we'll just give you about a couple of minutes if you want to introduce yourself there as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Your Worship. I'll start by saying that my upper back is not the best. So it might not be much of a competition. So thank you, Mayor Zevian and council for having me here tonight. I will keep my comments brief. I know you have a full, I believe you have a full agenda for the evening. Just wanted to come by and say hello. I know I was here briefly with Sergeant Tim Doyle when he presented the multi-year financial plan recently, but I felt that I should come say hi. So my name is Ed Nugent, not Ted, as many people think. He's Theodore. I'm Edward. So yeah, I'm in my 19th year now, just about done 19 years with the RCMP. Most recently, I was I was the Staff Sergeant Senior Operations NCO in King's District, working out of New Minas, transferred here about three weeks ago now, really looking forward to working closely with council and with, you know, other important partners here in West Hans. Quick background on me, I joined the RCMP in 2007 at the ripe old age of 22. And I got posted to Port Hardy, British Columbia, and I had to do a Yahoo search. I don't think Google was around then, or if it was, I didn't know about it. I had no idea where Port Hardy was. It was on the north end of Vancouver Island. I went there and it was a whole lot of fun, really busy, and learned a lot. And I went from there to Prince Rupert, BC. And while there, I was promoted to corporal in charge of a watch. It was the until King's, that was my biggest detachment. It was a significant size. There was about 10,000 people in town. There's, I was on the coast in BC and lots of very busy work there. And then I made a little move, about 6,000 kilometers across the country to the coast of Labrador, where I was a corporal detachment commander in a little town called Cartwright. I had two constables, both named Steve, one of whom used to be posted here, Steve for about West Hans. He always spoke very positively about this area, and I remembered that when I took the transfer to Kings in the first place, and then when this opportunity came up. From there, I was promoted to Sergeant in Nain on the north coast of Labrador, as far north, the most northerly settled, still settled community in Labrador. I did two years there, one year of which was impacted by COVID. So that was interesting in an isolated post. Then I went to Cape Breton. I was in St. Peters, posted there. I lived in Port Hawsbury, though, and then Kings, and now here. So I've been all over. I've been a detachment commander three times previously, and of course, senior officer in Kings. I have a fair bit of experience working with police advisory boards and town councils and Inuit community governments and all sorts of local and wider sort of government. I think that the relationship with the RCMP and between the RCMP and the community is crucial, and I will be at your call whenever you need information, whenever you need the police to address something. If the council, if the will of the council is that maybe I should be in to discuss an issue, I will be here. Absolutely. I'm open to communications and to keeping the lines open. So I want us to be close, I guess is the easiest way to put it. And if any of you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Staff Sergeant Nugent. Any questions to Staff Sergeant Council at this point? All right. Be careful what you ask, Corey. Your phone might start ringing quite a bit.
That's okay.
We'll hold you to your promise. All right. Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir. All right, folks, we have our previous meeting minutes. They were circulating in your package as well. If there's nothing to change in those, we will accept them as presented. All right. We do have two presentations this evening. Our first one is the West Hans Historical Society, and that's an update on their cultural center. So if you want to stop up, John, and, you know, the routine, click your mic. I know you have a couple of other members, I believe, as well with you. So if they want to come up and join, you guys are welcome as well, or you can stay in the audience as well. We know you're a big part of it, too. You're up, John.
Thank you very much. It's been a year since I was last here, and some of the faces around the table have changed. So I hope that this information is helpful to you as we move forward. So congratulations on your, is it too late to congratulate? So I'm representing the West Hans Historical Society, and we are intending to build a cultural heritage center up on lands next to Fort Edward. So I just wanted to bring the concept to you today and talk about what we're thinking about. We've had a busy year. I'll tell you what we'd be doing this year, sort of what we're planning to do next year, and going forward from there. So next slide. So just a quick description of what we're going to do. This will be a year-round staffed complex of the apex of cultural activity in West Hans. It'll be the entry point for valley tourism activities, the first place where tourists will stop to find out what's going on in the valley. It'll explore the untold stories of West Hans development. There are five museums in the community now, but some of them are very specifically focused, and this will have a wider scope. It'll be a major tourist attraction, four million cars a year cross over the causeway. And if we attract even half a percent of them to turn, to make three left turns and come up to the fort, that'll be 20,000 to 40,000 people. So a year-round attraction for a major tourist attraction. It'll become an economic driver for Windsor and the area. We know that when corporations are relocating, they want to know that there's a healthy cultural scene in the community they're moving to. So it'll be an economic driver, and it will raise the profile and pride of the entire municipality. So I appreciate the work the council's already done to give us access to the land, and I hope you're going to see the benefits as we move along. So a quick project recap. We're going to start back in 1750, when Fort Edward was built on the site of Acadian lands, Acadian Church and the Mi'kmaq longhouse. And then the expulsion happened in 1755. The ag fair started 10 years later on that very site in 1765. And Fort Edward was the site of the military depot and Jewish legion in World War I. A little bit of town history, the township itself was formed in 1764. The town was chartered in 1878. Remember the Great Fire? No one here was there, but 1897, and then amalgamation, as you all recall, is in 2020. So that's where the town, the town came together. But we're not, we've got many other things that happened in this Windsor area. And I just bring your attention to a couple of things. Kings College, the birthplace of hockey, the termination of the first road in Canada, the termination of the first railroad in Nova Scotia, the Black Nova Scotian community is very strong here, and we have a huge history of commerce and industry. So there's lots to celebrate other than the few things that happened at the fort. So going to the bottom line, that's the story of this project, is that council declared the property beside Fort Edward to be surplus and invited developers to come in. It was a proposal. When the Historical Society heard about that, we were dismayed that we might be losing the sacred land and the historic property that was next to Fort Edward. So we petitioned council, and you wisely agreed to cancel the development. And the next year, we came forward last year and asked if you would lease us the land so that we could spend the next five years raising interest and money to build a cultural heritage center. So that's where we are now. We will get that contract signed, by the way. It's been a while in the works. And then the past year has seen the growth of the Piscuit Cultural Heritage Center. The Development Committee is at the ground running, and we've moved, I think, from a bunch of history nerds to a group of community champions who are going to fight for this. So we've moved it out into the wider community. Next slide. So there we go. So the next five years, this is how the project will go forward, if the winds are right and the tides are favorable. So 2025 was an organizational year, and we did a lot of exposure activities. I've spoken to about 20 groups, or champions in the community, and made presentations to them. 2026, we're going to focus on fundraising and public promotion. That's when we'll go out into the public and do more media stuff. In 2027, we've already written the bylaws, but in 27, we'll actually activate the PCHC Board and society and make sure that it's operational. 2028, provincial and federal funding, we'll start the design work. 2029, site prep and construction. 2030, we're hoping to open. And if we look forward 30 years from there, you'll have the 20th anniversary of the center to coincide with a 300th anniversary of Windsor. So that's our goal. As we celebrate 300 years, we're hoping to have the doors open for 20. So that's where we are. So so far, as I said, I've made 20 informational presentations to people in the community. I met with Cody Boyce, our MP, just this afternoon, and I'm meeting with the Avondale Historical Society tomorrow. So this is what I do. We're going to register the society and the CRA. Like I said, the bylaws are written, and we will get CRA approval to give receipts. Right now, we're working through the museum. So if you make us a contribution, we can give you a tax receipt. We're going to recruit stakeholder representatives who represent the Mi'kmaq, the Acadians, and the Black community. We will also have people from the historical societies and people from the military side. We'll elect the first PCHC Board next year. Right now, we're just a development committee. We'll start to do public events and appeals. We'll do public promotion and membership sales, and we'll start hitting the corporations, the organizational and legacy funding sources. So we'll start to raise some money. We're going to have to, later in 2026, we'll recruit the architect and the designer. We did present you with a concept building, but I've had some negative feedback on that. So we're going to readdress that and see where we can go. And we're going to design the internal historic display. I have a separate committee, which is working now, to start to build that display as a digital display, and that will go into the center. So we're looking for a $250,000 grant to build that display. And then we'll brief federal and provincial officers as needed for the funding. So, next slide. Rather than present the outside of the building, I want to present to you tonight inside of the building. What's going to go on in this building that's sitting up there at the top of the hill? So the next slide, of course, there will be an operational center, which will have a visitor center, the office, a boardroom, and a gift shop. That's typical for a building of this type, and it'll be spread throughout the building. The next slide, please. The big thing, oh, go back to the green line. Can you go back there? The permanent display, the tapestry of history depicting the overlapping events and societies that formed West Hans. And this will be a permanent display. This is the piece that will attract those 20,000 to 40,000 visitors a year. So that will be, if you think of the display at Grand Prairie, it'll be that style of display with lots of information. It won't be artifacts. It'll be a story of the 300 years of our history. The next slide, we already have a genealogical research center in the current museum, which is probably the second largest genealogical collection in the province, but it's in a wooden building that's already burnt down twice. So we're a little concerned about the survival of our records. Although we're digitizing them, the paper records are still critical. So there will be a fireproof vault, humidity controlled, all of that sort of stuff, so that we can protect those valuable records in future. Outside, it will be a room with a table, so researchers can come in and do their research and lay it out on the tables and go through it. We think that will be a major attraction. We're already pulling in 500 to 600 people a year, so that could go up as well as people get to know it. And a room this size with empty walls, there'll be an opportunity for art shows and things like that in that room as well. So it'll be a multifunction room with a genealogical research center. The important part, the next slide, is the salons. The major part of the building will be a configurable, flexible space for exhibits, displays, performances, events, linking our historic cultural life to our contemporary community. History and culture do not stop at any given point. They just continue. And so we need to celebrate our history while recreating it so that we can experiences it as well. So this is the place where we could have an Acadian Christmas dinner, where we could have an art show, where we could do demonstrations of Mi'kmaq crafts, where we could have small musical performances, that sort of thing. So if you think that there are four seasons in the year, and we had four events each season, that's 16 unique events that could happen up there throughout the year. In the winter months, when some of the smaller museums are closed, we could borrow some of their exhibits and put them on display in the Piscuit Cultural Center, so that their museums get exposure as well with the displays that they've already got. So that's, that's the intent, is that we're going to have somebody who's actually focused on cultural activities and will coordinate with other groups in the community to do cultural things. It won't have a theater, because we've already got a theater. It won't have a restaurant, because we've already got restaurants in the community. And there's no point putting a lot of money in duplicating facilities already there. But because it's a year-round staffed center, they will be able to coordinate cultural activities and use the rest of the cultural facilities in the community to better effect. So that's the intent. It's not just a museum. It's a cultural center. It's a historic center, a heritage center, where we can explore family histories and put that on display. So that's the intent. Oh, sorry, outside, slide, outside to the actual building will be three things. We've offered a space to the Mi'kmaq so that they can build a longhouse, which is a stick and temporary structure, which they use for ceremony and education and governance. And there'll be an opportunity for them to come in and build a longhouse and put it on display and use it in ways that are appropriate to them. There'll be a small amphitheater. So in the summertime, we can do small outdoor presentations, historical events, things like that. And there'll be a heritage garden. So the gardeners in the community come up and put on a display of heritage plants, healing plants, whatever, so we can show that part of the agricultural piece, which is the valley. So I hope you don't, I hope I've shown you what the building is intended to be from the inside. Don't get fixated on the circles. The circles will not be the shape, but I wanted you to get a sense of what's going to be in the building. So that's the Piscuit Cultural Heritage Center. We're spelling Piscuit this way, because this is the original spelling in the earliest documents for Piscuit. So it's slightly different than the spelling we're using now, but we'll be advocating to change everybody else to our way of thinking and use that as the spelling as we go along. So that's the Piscuit Cultural Heritage Center. And I thank you for your time and your attention. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to fill you in on anything that you need to know.
Thank you so much, John. You guys have been definitely busy. Questions, council to John? There is one thing, sorry, Councillor Smith, plenty.
I just had a couple of quick ones. I guess I just had a couple of quick ones through your chair. So you mentioned that you had preliminary meetings already with Cody today, and have you met with our provincial?
Yes.
Just, and I know that the request, I see that that's not coming for a few years down the road, but was there any sort of indication on where they felt, what they felt might be available for this kind of assumption?
Actually, I had to slow Cody down. He was ready to go and ask for money tomorrow. And I went, just hold on, we're not quite ready yet. We need to develop some actual plans and put some actual budgets together. All these numbers are intelligent estimates, but we looked at other projects, and these seem reasonable for a building like this. But we have to put some actual top-level pricing together, as you guys know how to build things. So you just don't go in with a blank slate. So he'll be ready to support us in a big way, as will Melissa, when we actually get to the point where we got to manage the, first the bureaucrats, and then the elected officials to sign some checks for us. But I think the Parks Canada has said to us for years that we're not going to do anything to do anything at Fort Edward until the municipality shows some energy. So if we can put a couple of million dollars into the center from the local base, they will almost be compelled to match that. So it's a big order, and we will be asking people to dig deep. But I think, I think there's enough resources in the community to make this happen. We don't have, we don't need all the money tomorrow. We've got five years to raise it. So that's where we're at.
Absolutely.
We've already got a grant from the Masons, and we have the lease on a $200,000 piece of land. So we're on our way.
Quick follow-up. So what is the economic benefit to West Hans?
It's hard to say. Nobody's got a crystal ball, but your CAO did give me a tool that was produced by the Canadian Parks and Recreation Association, and you plug some numbers into it, and it will tell you what the economic value is on a recreational or similar sort of facility. So I plugged the numbers in, and if we build a $10 million building and operate it for 10 years, for another $6 million or, you know, $600,000 a year, that $16 million investment would have a 10-year payback of 11 times. So the model projects that we could make, we could attract $14 million worth of tourism activity every year. So it's $140 million worth of tourism activity over 10 years, and a $16 million 10-year investment would have an 11 to 1 return. So if anybody came to you and told you we can give you $11, $11 in every dollar you invest, I think it would be a good, this model may not be perfect, but if you got a better model, I'd be glad to run the numbers for you. But that's the model we're working on at this point.
I like your advisor. So I'll just give you guys a quick story. I was at the Trigotha Creek Railway on Sunday with the kids, and there was some people in front of me. My ears, they wander sometimes when I'm in public. You overhear conversations sometimes. And these people were blown away with Windsor, and the conversation was, first time here, and my God, they have everything. They're racing pumpkins at 2:00 today. We got to stick around to watch the pumpkins. And who would have thought we can ride these little trains around these little things? And there must have been maybe 100 people there at the time. And you think of 100 people sticking around for the whole day, wandering and exploring, and either eating and shopping, and getting familiar with everything that we have. And their comment was, Windsor has so many things going out throughout the whole year, going on throughout the whole year. Like, what more could they do? That was the comment. I thought it was kind of cool overhearing. And then we hear this center that could potentially offer that much more. It's, you know, It's, it's, you know, the, the thought is quite, it's quite attractive, eh? Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor, through you to John. Back, I think the previous presentation you did a year ago, they mentioned climate control area for artifacts, to preserve, preserve artifacts in this area. Is that what the vault's for? Or is that, is there a separate area for that or?
It's more intended for the paper records and the diaries and the bibles and the newspapers and things like that. But it, you know, it could be, it could be there for smaller artifacts. There are artifacts in the fort, which we can't bring to West Hans, they're stored in Halifax, in temperature-controlled conditions. So we're certainly not going to have enough space for an old car or a sleigh or any large artifacts.
All right, no, thanks.
All right, we're not seeing any more lights there, John.
Just one last story. I spent the weekend up at the, at the blockhouse as the docent. And over the three or four days of the long weekend in September, I had a hundred and forty visitors come through. And like your story, they were, they didn't know it was there, but when they got there, they loved the stories. They loved walking through the blockhouse. And if we could build a display up there that would hold people for more than the twenty minutes it takes to her, Fort Edward, we then have a chance to send them down to the restaurants for lunch, for a coffee. And if we can hold them for an hour or two, they might even stay overnight. So this is an economic benefit to the, to the merchants and the, and the town in a very real sense. So I, I, I appreciate your support. And if you have any questions or you want me to come to your home and give you a personal presentation, I'd be more than glad to do that.
We'll see if anybody takes you up on that one, but no lights definitely went on there. Thank you so much. We look forward to the more updates as you, as you go along.
Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely, guys. All right, council, our second presentation, Windsor Township Business Association. Yep, you want to come on up, Karen, and tell us all the good thing the township has been doing?
I am solo tonight. Ezra does send his regrets. So thank you for this opportunity to update council. So it was busy summer. June, we did our first, probably in a while, downtown cleanup. We had about fourteen volunteers. This next slide. So this picture here is this little family came from Mount Denson because he had just seen it on Facebook and bought his three little girls and they just had the time of their life. They had a Timbit and a can of pop. Maybe that was a little tracked at them, I'm not sure. Good news is there was very little garbage, we only had five bags out of all of downtown. And we'll actually be repeating that this weekend. And the family next to them are also from Elrassos, so I kind of conned them into this photo. But another family participating in the event. So in July, we hired our summer student. So we had a Canada summer job for eight weeks. We actually added two weeks to this, so we actually had her for ten weeks. On, we participated in Pride, which was a great event this year. Sierra got a fantastic video of them marching down to the water. We redid selfie bingo. The winner got fourteen hundred dollars in prizes, so businesses really stepped up. And two things we did this summer, we did WTBAPOV. So Windsor Township Business Association Point of View. So Sierra went and just took photos from different parts of the, of our area that don't normally get photographed, so. And from that, if you've ever fallen down a YouTube rabbit hole, there's a watchmaker, Tim Hader, who will go and sit in a city and you have to run up to him and say, love your journey, and then you win a watch. He doesn't give you any hints. Anyway, he's fabulous. So I made Sierra do that. She was very, very easygoing with it. So that was where Sierra Wednesday, so she would go and she would sit, she sat at Clifton, she sat in her, all different places. And the winner got initially a twenty dollar gift certificate and then we upped it to a fifty dollar gift certificate of their choosing. So, and my last one happened to be at the fort. So. Thanks, oh yeah. So August was very busy, obviously, with Avon River Days. But we couldn't go without giving you guys a huge shout out to this amazing new sign that you guys did up for the street closures. The businesses were very appreciative of it and it's an amazing sign. So thank you very much for that. We took a different approach with sponsorship for Avon River Days. So we threw in a thousand dollars and we gave businesses the opportunity to throw in a hundred dollars. So for a hundred dollars, they got like a two thousand dollar value of sponsorship. So ten businesses took advantage of that. Our float and our parade, really the winner was Janice Forand. I don't know if anyone saw Janice's energy during the parade, but I don't know how she does it, but she was amazing. We gave away tickets to Joel Plaskett and we also put in welcome gifts so that all those musicians went away with a, a nice Windsor. Not only a nice, something like a Stanley, not a Stanley though, but also a gift card for a business from the area. We did our music a little bit different this year. I don't know, I know there were questions that came up with that. So normally we would do Friday night music, but we actually, we were only getting twenty, twenty-five people. So we did three mini concerts this year. One was focused on kids, one was country and one was rock. The first one, we had seventy, which it was a thirty-five plus degree day. It was hot, so I was pretty pleased with that. And then we got up to a hundred with, with, once we had Ryan Harvey down at the gazebo. We had barbecues, we had kids toys out for each of those. So we'll probably continue that format and when there is a facility, mini concert on the hill. Who knows? John and I can work together on that. Garlic Fest, congrats to the municipality, that was an amazing event. So we did coloring contests. So we had a cute little garlic. I think Vanessa and I were on the same graphic site. It's like garlic looks familiar. And then we also did a scavenger hunt. And normally with those events, like the morning and then it kind of fizzles, but there were people at our tent all morning. And kind of, Mayor, to your comment, we heard those comments all day that we just saw this, we'd never heard of Garlic Fest and here we are. And they spent all day just up and down the street and took the kids to the playground and all of that. So, so yeah, so these two kids, obviously, probably not a surprise to anybody, chose bakeries as their prize. So that was great. And then the photo next to that is our September twenty-sixth Business and Community Social. So this was open to everybody, for the community and the business. You didn't have to be a business to attend. It was a free barbecue, all local food. We met some great new business owners who've never been out to anything. So we will be redoing that, so December fifth, mark your calendars. Invites will show up shortly. And we'll be redoing that again for the business and the community as a little holiday celebration. So the facade program, this was the most successful it's been in a few years. We have used all our budget for this. So there's seven businesses there, plus two more businesses have applications in that we're waiting to see how the bottom three go to, if we have any funds left over. We'll go to the next slide. So just, so for the facade program, for people who aren't familiar, it's, it's curbside appeal. It can be as something as simple as what Accelerate did, which is just putting better signage on their windows. Garrish and Gray, I'd never realized that Garrish and Gray didn't ever say it was a cafe. I just, everyone knows it's a cafe. So those are new signs. And then Tody Bogels is our new barber shop, Studio Twenty-two. They didn't do all the projects that they had hoped to do because of pricing, but that was their improvement. Just to, to give you a range, the Accelerate, they got funding of two hundred and forty dollars and then the projects that will max out. So if you've been down by Blossoms or if you've been down by the Napa Building, those ones will max out around two thousand dollars in reimbursements. So yeah, so it's very, been a very successful year for that. And I am hoping to get a few more projects in before the year end closes. So coming up, as I say, this Saturday, ten to one, down at the waterfront gazebo. There'll be tea, coffee, drinks, snacks made with local bars. And anything that we don't, don't use, we will redistribute to Posse or Harvest Hosts, so it doesn't go to waste. I would like to highlight that it is Small Business Week coming up next week. So there are three events in our area. So the Avon Chamber is having a breakfast on the twenty-first. We're doing an evening event at the Naked Crepe. So if you haven't had a chance to go there yet, this is a free event. Anyone, business, just, you know, find your favorite small business, take them on a date. There'll be appetizers, refreshments. And then on Friday, there'll be a lunch and learn at CBDC Nova Scotia Works Office for lunch and learn with Melissa from Nova Scotia Loyal. We're also doing a planter, a holiday planter program with the businesses. So we're doing a cost split on that with blossoms, divining those. And then November twenty-second, which is the parade, is when our holiday lights contest will kick off. So we've gone, changed direction with this one a little bit as well. So every year is going to be called Starry Nights. So it's all about the lights because all of the holidays between November and January all involve lights of some type. And then each year they'll have a sub-theme. So this year it's Starry Nights, nostalgia through the decades. I don't know how many of you are really familiar with Bradley from Big Fur, but he's very enthusiastic. He has bought a sleigh, so stay tuned for his. Businesses are holding their designs pretty close, so it's going to be good competition this year. Very excited for it. And as I said, December fifth, we will have another community and business social. January and February, we're going to really be focusing on year end and winter thing preparation. So this will be our third winter thing, March seventh, twenty twenty-six, which is the first Saturday of March break. One change that we've made already is the face painting will be free. So there'll be nothing for parents to have to pay for unless they want to buy a hot chocolate or anything like that. But face painting and balloons and stuff will all be covered by us. And I would encourage you to all take back to your constituents that you, we do have fundraising opportunities. So a barbecue, a bake sale, anyone can put their name in for that if it's a community group. So guides, scouts, community halls, all, all of them are welcome. So that's what we're going to be, be working on. I did want to give an update. I had briefly mentioned looking at West Hans gift cards. I was very excited about the one I found until I found the price on it. So I found the Lamborghini of gift cards, which was a little sad. But this shows what we can do. And then I also talked to a community that Kentville, who does just paper ones. And so we're going to do some more research on that. Because when we were doing the worst here on Wednesday, that's, it would be a great opportunity to say like, like, put it right in their hand instead of me having to like find the person and give them their gift cards. So in addition to, to all of the events, we're doing our regular things. We had a great meeting with Counselor Bonnie Smith and Jim Ivey on August twenty-fifth, talking about wide variety of topics. My main priority remains keeping my schedule however businesses want to meet. If they want me to meet them there, if they want to have a coffee, if they want to go for a walk, meet in the park, Sunday to Saturday. Generally anytime of day. So the newsletter goes out about twice a month on average. And attending as many events as I can. So with the Chamber, the Valley RIN, West Hans Pride, Valley Women's Business Association, which is celebrating twenty-five years on Saturday night, so. And then one of the most exciting meetings I was at, I don't, I'm not going to steal their, their news, but Hansport will have some very exciting news coming up. Their society is all registers and I'm sure Tim and gang will be here to tell you guys all about that, so. That's basically what I've been up to. This is an amazing community and one of the things I want, I really want to do with Winter Thing is kind of at each site, because we'll have four or five sites. It's just like a tickboard of where everyone's coming from. And we want all the communities to be able to participate in Winter Thing because it really is for all of us, because winter's long and cold. Happy to take any questions. If I can't answer them, I will definitely work on the answers for you.
Perfect, thanks so much, Karen. You guys are busy as well. Counselor Leary Pinch.
Thank you, through your worship. So you had said that face painting is now free for Winter Thing, which is awesome. But then you mentioned unless they wanted a, like a hot chocolate or something. So there are. Like from a, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, the groups who are doing fundraising, so like.
Okay, thank you.
So Seekat sells hot chocolates. So yeah, so we're not going to tell a fundraising group that they can't.
No, no.
Highly recommend any community group from any twelve, any of the fifty-two communities to, to put an expression of interest in when it goes live.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just make a huge community-wide snowball fight down Garrish Street or do the whole town and all for themselves with little flags and forts and take the fort and council can have a fort and.
I think that's a great.
You'd see a huge uptick on somebody wanting to throw a snowball at any of us.
That's an excellent opportunity for Avon Sport Group, is what that is, so.
Free of charge to that idea. No more lights, thank you so much. You guys have been busy, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, council, unfinished business postponed motions. We have accessibility advisory committee work plan. We have Chair Michelle Bourgeois. And I don't think Jordan's here this evening, but all right, Michelle, if you want to come up, you know the, the routine with the mic.
Well, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to speak. As, as the mayor mentioned, my name is Michelle Bourgeois. I'm the Chair of the West Hans Region Municipality Accessibility Advisory Committee. I'm the presenter here. I'm certainly not the only contributor to this. It was a huge group effort on the part of committee and staff and whatnot. So it was on the agenda. You had the superhero Jordan and the sidekick. Well, you've got the sidekick. Jordan couldn't make it, so here we are. Next slide, please. So what the, the question really overarching question is why would we need a work plan? Well, as, as everybody knows, West Hans committed to the Nova Scotia Accessibility Twenty Thirty Goals through the provincial mandate, as well as our own strategy that we adopted, version two of it now. To meet those goals, council really needs clear steps and good information. We believe that this work plan gives us that starting point. Now, our role as the committee is to provide advice as an advisory committee and make recommendations to council. We feel this plan sets out practical actions that council, staff and our committee can support and work on together. The first plan is mostly about collecting information and setting up processes. There are some immediate deliverables, but a lot of it is getting that baseline set up. So as it says, it may not seem exciting, but without it, we're just sort of flailing around randomly picking at things. So data, good data is the key to good decision-making. So if we don't know where we are, we certainly can't decide where we need to go, let alone how we're going to get there. So the next slide, please. So we divided up into several areas of focus where we feel there's some opportunities to make achievable differences and gains. So the first was accessible parking. The goal obviously is to make sure that accessible municipal parking is safe, consistent and meets accessibility standards. So to accomplish that, we felt that there were certain actions we could, we could, we could move forward on. First would be a review of all accessible parking spaces, both on West Hand Streets and at municipal facilities. And then compare those against the CSA standard, the B six fifty-one twenty-three and the Nova Scotia Built Environment Accessibility Standard. Essentially, they are the same. So potato, patato, the, the dimensions are the same. So you, one, one is interchangeable with the other. But the Built Environment Accessibility Standard is actually part of the mandated requirement. So if the spaces don't meet that standard and can't be reasonably fixed where they are. if the spaces don't meet that standard and can't be reasonably fixed where they are, relocate them. If they're not meeting standard, they're, they're not serving their design purpose. So we create a plan to upgrade the spaces that need improvement. And one of the things we'd like to see is include that standard in the West Hans Region Municipality Standards Manual. So that future parking spaces are built to that standard. It just becomes the de facto design that you build to when you're, when you're building. Another thing that the Built Environment Accessibility Standard is going to require is new parking spot, new accessible curbside parking spots. There has to be a public feedback component to that. So we'd want to see a process laid in place where that can start to, to happen. It may exist in some informal capacity now, but our thought is somehow sort of formalize that. And one thing that came up from a couple of different members was post a list and a map of accessible parking locations on the website. So residents, I have residents, but and visitors probably more so can plan their trips ease more easily. There again, we're not guaranteeing that here's an accessible parking spot for you, but here's where you would go to look. For especially with the exciting things that could drive more tourism here. The more accessible our, our locations are and easy to find, the better that would be. Next slide please. One of the things we, we really wanted to try to focus is getting accessibility in to be part of every municipal decision. Not an add on at the end, not a, we should do this, just we're doing it, we do it. So various jurisdictions, HRM to some degree has it. The City of Ottawa has it, obviously an order of magnitude bigger than we are, but conceptually it's the same. They have an accessibility consideration component to staff reports, whether it's a recommendation report, an information report. And then in that staff can explain what they did to make sure that the project or the policy referenced is accessible. And you can note what can consultations rather were taken with the committee. You can note that there. And the department is responsible for making sure that accessibility has been considered from the start. Now, the key to that is having a common checklist, sort of a go or no go thing. If it's this, you need to consider this. So then you're getting consistent focus on accessibility and, and sort of hardwiring it into our processes. Next slide please. This is a big piece. Facility review and inventory. The goal is to know the current state of accessibility in all the municipal spaces. So the actions really, we, we'd like to complete, create one complete master list of all municipal buildings, parks and public spaces. Where we have one list where we can start to tackle this, the, the job ahead. And we develop a basic, simple template for assessment. So every time somebody goes into a space to do an assessment, regardless of who they are or what their background is, they're looking at the same thing and they're collecting the same data. There again, good data feeds good decisions. Everything else is subjective. It's often said, oh, well, that ramp looks like so and so could use it. Well, so and so might be an Olympic athlete. Standards are there for a reason. So if we can make that template where, where we're all looking at the same thing, that would help. Obviously, we want to start site visits and accessibility assessments as soon as possible, just because of the magnitude of, of what, what's ahead of us. And build a dashboard to track what's been assessed, who is responsible or what department or business unit, if you will, is responsible. And where we could chart progress on, on any upgrades. It'd be, it'd be great to include municipal workplaces as part of that review. And we understand that there's various different. There's Josh committees, there's collective bargaining units and whatnot, but we really sort of see that as an HR led function that, but certainly there's probably some value in that and how that would roll out, we'd certainly defer to HR. And then we want to sort of solidify how we would be working towards the Rick Hansen Foundation certification for new buildings and major renovations as set out in the Equity Anti-Racism and Accessibility Strategy. Whether that means asking for that in RFPs, asking, you know, putting, putting that into your procurements for that type of work. That's, that's certainly a decision council will have to, to make. Next slide please. Training for staff, council and committees. The goal is to build understanding and skills around accessibility, equity and anti hate. Some of the actions we'd like to see are provide ongoing training opportunities for all staff, council members and advisory committee members. That's staff, resident members, anybody who sits on an advisory committee. And we'd really like to see that framed as a as an educational. A lot of time in my experience over the years, this is always seen as a punitive. We did something wrong, so we have to be trained. And it's a challenge. If we could frame that as more of a, it's an all staff learning opportunity. You know, I think that contextualize that a little differently. Hopefully it will work better. And use local trainers and resources wherever possible. Certainly local resources. If they're referring to local situations or experiences, they resonate better with most people who are, are from this area. They can, they can be more familiar. And develop the training with input from both the accessibility committee and the diverse equitable and inclusive committees, communities committee. Next slide please. This is an exciting one, which we've sort of been working on with Kathy Johnson Eisner and Kathy Keo and Brielle and Jordan, is outreach engagement and community support. The goal is to help businesses and organizations and events become more accessible. So the actions recommended would be to include, now I'd say the accessibility committee, diverse equitable and inclusive communities committee members. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we have forty committee members on a special events task force, but a representative from each of those on any municipal special event task force or working group. So you're getting that look at what you're doing in the planning stages, in the permitting stages. Rather than coming behind and saying, this is what we have to do after the horse has left the gate. I know there's been some work. We're certainly not diminishing that. I know there's some accessible event guides. Some information that's been out. We'd like to sort of focus that all into one sort of accessible event guide for event organizers. When you meet with the municipal working group, task force, whatever you call, choose to call it. Here's the accessible event guide, a quick tips and tricks manual and some contacts and some relevant information that we can hand out. And to do that, we can do a jurisdictional scan, provincial and federal events. They've got some great information out there and we could take from that and add it to our local package. We'd love to see a recognition program for businesses and organizations that improve accessibility. Something like an H, West Hans Region Municipally Window Decal, recognition on the website or social media. Whether you call that an accessibility ally or an accessibility champion, or just some recognition and encouragement for businesses that choose to go perhaps above and beyond. You know, appreciating that most small business owners are very busy running their small business. So we want to keep that, you know, as, as an attainable goal. And we'd like to create a short accessibility tip handouts for business and community groups with practical ideas that make a big difference. Now, a few of us went to various three or four businesses in the downtown late summer, just to sort of take some videos and, and do some quick walkthroughs, informal things. And every, every business we went to was incredibly happy and thrilled to be part of it. And they were, there's not, there's not one thing we said to anybody that they were, oh, no, we can't do that. That's crazy. And so the, the uptake on that was from our initial experience. And that was both from small, single owner operator facilities to large corporate coffee chains. From a, to a person, they were all very, very willing to listen and, and, and learn and, 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 and take some tips on that. So that's an exciting opportunity. Next slide please. And the communications in the website. The goal obviously is to make municipal information easier to find, understand and use. There again, I appreciate, I know there's been some work on the website and I know the staff is diligently working away at it. One of the things we'd like to see is review the website and start aligning it with the web content accessibility guidelines. It's a technical, it's WCAG. Basically, Cole's notes on that, it's, it's a sta, it's an accepted standard of web content accessibility that's universally applied, I'll say around the world. So you have, you can get apps that screen, sort of police your website for that and tell you how you can change things. So it works better with screen readers and whatnot. And provide training to staff who update the website and create public documents. I've been basking around and the provincial and communication standard is expected to come out in twenty twenty eight, twenty nine. And nobody I've spoken to thinks that Nova Scotia is going to invent their own standard. The expectation is that it's going to either be WCAG or aligned very much with it. So anything we do in advance of that prepares us better for when that switch gets flipped. We're already halfway there. Make sure that all municipal documents, websites and public communications are written in plain language. We really made an effort, some of us made more of an effort than others to, I, I had to de-technicalize this. I'll use my technical writing and but this, we really made an effort with this document to write it in as much plain language as we could. So hopefully if somebody's reading this, they can see a bit of a difference. That there's not a lot of jargon. There's not a lot of, we've tried to avoid too many abbreviations and, and, and technical language, not because we don't think people would understand it, but it doesn't serve the point of this overview. And if anybody would have more detailed questions, we can certainly dive into that. So, and then we'd like to see the, the diverse equitable and inclusive communities committee develop, be involved in when they're developing policies related to anti racism and equity. And, you know, certainly not speaking on their behalf, just throwing it in there as well. Next slide please. So moving forward. As we said, we see this work plan as just the beginning. It focuses on building that base of where we are, setting standards and starting to embed accessibility into how the municipality works. By supporting these actions, council will be showing a real commitment to equity and accessibility. Staff will have a clear direction on where, where they're, they're going. And residents will see a steady, practical progress towards a more inclusive West Hans. By, and, and we really feel that we need to establish that baseline. So that's where this work plan is a lot of sort of heavy on data collection, assessments and compilation of things, a few policy changes. And next slide please. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank all the members of the Accessibility Advisory Committee, past and present. And the staff, I can't say enough about the staff that works with us. I've reached out to staff that aren't on the committee in the formulation of this report, just to touch base and say, hey, is this, is this crazy stuff we're talking about? Or what? And everybody has been top notch. We have had no problem every, so as I say, the level of cooperation achieved in the creation of this plan is just good people doing good work. It's, I can't say enough about everybody, every staff person we reached out to, every member of council we reached out to perfectly. So we're, we can't, we couldn't be happier with the level of cooperation and hopefully it shows in the, in the work we did. So certainly any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you so much, Michelle. Questions on Michelle's report, council? Councillor John Smith.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I appreciate your passion for the subject, Michelle. Just one question. So there's, it seems like there's a lot of onsite work to do, reviews of buildings and that sort of thing. Who, who does that work actually? Who goes in and does the measuring and?
That would be something that council would have to determine whether that the committee really has probably limited capacity to take that on as, as a committee alone. They could probably serve as a, as a support. How that would look. Just the sheer, in order to get it done in a, in a, in a reasonable amount of time, I don't think the committee as it sits right now would have the capacity to do that on its own.
Are there, are there companies that do that?
There are, there are companies, there are consulting firms, there are. If, if, and there again, if your, if your template and your assessment material is, is created properly, you're not necessarily, you're not asking somebody to do a structural engineering assessment on a building. You're measuring doorways, you're measuring slopes and whatnot. So it's, there's, there's a variety of options there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sure, see you.
To follow up on that, when we did the structural assessment for the community center, we added an accessibility component. So that the firm gave us comments on that. And I don't know that Kathy has that as part of the facility assessment piece, but there's probably room for some type of comment in, in that world as well. This is more about centralized, decentralizing recreation facilities, not necessarily down to the nuts and bolts, but there's probably room for something in that if, if the scope's not already firmly set. So we'll try to piggyback on some things when we're doing those things as we do with the community center, but there might be room in that facility assessment as well. Thank you.
Perfect. Councillor Ivy.
Thank you, Mayor. Michelle as well. Thank you very much for the presentation and and even more so on the working plan that, and the detail that you have into that with goals set out by area category and then objectives to achieve under each one. It's, it's a great thing to see. Accessibility has been an objective within the province for many years. In fact, it goes back longer than I'd like to admit when I first saw the initial plans on this. Many, but more recently to see this and to see a, a working plan such as this, I think you'll have great success with it. So thank you for the work of you and the committee on it.
Thank you.
All right. No more questions on our end, Michelle. There is a recommendation in that report, council. Put that up on the screen, Clerks there. Councillor Leary Pinch.
The WHRM Accessibility Advisory Committee recommends that council adopt the work plan as presented.
Moved by Councillor Leary Pinch. Is there a second there? Seconded by Councillor Morton. Paul. Discussion on the motion. See nothing? All right. Well, oh, sorry, Councillor Remy. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Through you, Chair. Just, I just wanted to note what a difference it was reading this report as opposed to some of the ones that come to council, like because of the plain language aspect of it. So just, just wanted to note that more than anything else and kind of to point it out.
Perfect. All right. So we'll put the vote up onto the screen there. Motion has passed. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Chair Bourgeois. Again, the committee is doing a lot of work and we appreciate it very much.
I do have, if anybody wants, I just thought the one technical thing I did, I referred to the parking standard. I do have a handle that shows that if, find physical example of what the CSAB six fifty one twenty three standard is, is the parking spots in Wolfville on the main street? They have the spot, then a delineated area behind with the ped ramp and a tactile plate there. That's whether you call it the CSA standard or the Built Environment Standard, that's what they're going to, that's what they're going to want. So if you want to see a real live example there in Wolfville.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, council. Next on the agenda, municipal complex, one hundred King over seventy six Morrison selection, CAO Phillips.
Thank you, your worship. This report, council has the benefit of some history and some current numbers with respect to the two primary administration buildings that we currently occupy, seventy six Morrison being this building, of course, and one hundred King on King Street in Windsor. So this report is a bit of a culmination of some orientation, some workshopping that we've had the benefit of doing with council to kind of lead us to this recommendation. Again, the report gives you a bit of history, speaks to some of the values, some of the things that have been recorded in the past with different reports. Again, we tried to modernize some of the numbers based on class D estimates that we have obtained either in-house or through outside sources, which kind of indicate either the current cost of leasing or building, some of those values. We continue to bring in front of councils, just the potential of increased revenue should one of these two facilities not be occupied and be occupied by, we'll just say from private industry, whether they're renovated or who knows what might happen. But ultimately what we're looking for tonight from council is a direction. And the recommendation points us in the direction of one hundred King Street. And the recommendation does just that, where staff would go away with a more focused approach on one hundred King Street as to how that facility or that location could be, I guess, a bit modernized, but also brought up to a standard that is more habitable, we'll say. And I think our intent would be to give you some small, medium, large opportunities for renovations in the short, medium and long term. But again, the recommendation is aimed at pointing staff in a direction. And one hundred King Street is the direction being recommended in the report.
Perfect. Thank you very much, CAO. Questions, council to CAO. All right, we do have a recommendation up on the screen there. Somebody wishes to make that and we can discuss that. Councillor Leary Pinch.
Committee of the whole recommends that council direct staff to continue with conceptual plans and design of one hundred King Street Windsor to consolidate municipal administrative operations.
Moved by Councillor Leary Pinch. Is there a second there? Moved by councillor Leary Pinch, is there a second there? Seconded by councillor Bonnie Smith, discussion on the motion. Councillor Ivy.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, uh, I do appreciate the work that's been done getting us to this point in time, we've. I think, uh, mostly struggled with financial, uh, and cost aspects of what, uh, what any of the choices would, uh, result in, uh. Uh, from this exercise, whether it be to lease, build, or to choose one location over another. And so, uh, we don't have a cost on renovations, but we're selecting, uh, you know, uh, one of the properties and. In fact, I think we've only ever had estimates on, on the one property, I don't know that we had any. Uh, assessment done on accessibility within the building, the costs associated with the asbestos abatement that had been discussed previously and so forth, I think even included as part of the motion, so. In that regard, I find it difficult, uh, to point us in a single direction with the information presented, you know, as to date, which. I think has been pretty consistent with me, um, over the last number of years, not meaning to be critical, just saying that I think that's. Information that we would have in picking one over the other, thank you.
Further discussion on the motion, council? All right, see nothing, I'll reread the motion that's put forward to council, committee of the whole recommends that council direct staff to continue with conceptual plans and design of 100 King Street Windsor consolidate municipal administrative operations. If we can put that vote up on the screen, Clerks there. Motion is passed, thank you very much, everybody. All right, next on the agenda, Windsor Storm Water Management Plan, presentation by CBCL. If you want to come on up, gentlemen. You need no introduction at this point, but for the record, you know the, you know the routine.
Um, so, well, it's getting set up, I'll just do a quick introduction to what we're doing. Um, this is our final presentation on the final report that was issued about a month and, maybe a month and a half ago. Outlines, uh, a summary of the preferred options that we are proposing. Um, and discusses the benefits of those options and the, and the costs to go along with them. And, uh, Alan will jump into that here in a sec. Hey, everybody can hear me okay, and it looks like we can see, we'll get right into it, so we've been here a few times, uh, we'll, we'll run through. Sort of some of the background again, go through our option development, including our new integrated options or our, I guess, the, the integrated full. System options that were presented, uh, or that were included in that final report, and then talk about, uh, progressing the project into the next phases. So a little bit of background. This has really started, uh, after we've seen some very large storms increasing in frequency, uh, around the province, really around North America and the world. Two of note, July 2021, we saw forty-eight and a half millimeters of rain in about an hour and a half. Which in that intensity, uh, over that period of time is about equivalent to a one in 100 year storm. But didn't have the volume or the duration 24 hours of a, of a one in 100 year storm. Uh, and then in July of 23, we saw 208 millimeters of rain over a 24 hour period, so that is classified as a one in 100 year storm. Uh, in, uh, just a couple of years there. So looking at some of how this project began, we started with some data collection, uh, surveyed a number of, of manholes and catch basins around, uh, Windsor. Uh, went into a flow metering program in 2022 and 2024, where we did get one, approximately one in five year storm there in April of 2024 that we used for our calibration. And then began developing our modeling, uh, both 1D, which is water going straight into pipes and 2D, which integrates overland flow. And how water moves over the surface, uh, to, to understand what kind of conditions you'd be seeing in storm events. Uh, over, in total, we developed over a hundred, uh, different models, looking at the 12 primary scenarios. The sort of three or four main ones of which we will be discussing tonight. So what are some of the challenges with our existing conditions, uh, high water level elevation in the lake? Uh, we are assuming at six meters, is it always at six meters? No, but in, in some of those bigger storm events, uh, that's where we know it is, and so that causes. Issues with some of your outfalls, you can see in the profile at the bottom of the screen, those outfalls. Are generally in a range between two and four meters, so at those low water elevations or low water marks. You have sort of free flow or free outfall, but in high water, you are below and you have, uh, water backing up your pipes. You also have a little bit of a bold topography, uh, as you can see in the, uh, in, in, in the image there in the plan view, you have a, we have our six meter contour there and the light blue within it. It's all the areas of town that are below that six meter mark, so those are areas that are struggling to drain when the water level is high and there's a storm event. So looking at a one in five year event, which is approximately, again, that calibrating event we found on April the 12th. We see, uh, some significant, uh, flooding in a couple areas of town, we've pointed out the two major areas here. Along Stanis and then Gray, uh, just for reference, all of the, the different flood maps we're going to show you use the same scale. The lighter blue is sort of an inch or so of water, very, very minor, uh, flow or very minor ponding. Uh, the red is where we get into a meter plus, uh, so we don't want to be seeing those deep red values, uh, in any of our proposed scenarios. So going into detail on a couple of your existing sewer sheds, we have Albert Street, uh, which drains a number, uh, a, a, a large area of town here shown in the red. Polygon, uh, right now you have a 900 millimeter diameter storm main that tries, or that passes some of the water out to an outfall. You have a few separated streets upstream, uh, but we know we experienced flooding in the gray intersection there. Uh, specifically, uh, one infamous manhole, which we see here in our profile. Uh, right along Gray Street there, you can see that the manhole, the, the lower topography is, uh, is surcharging and flooding there, and so. We were able to replicate that condition in our one in five year and other, uh, storm events. So we felt pretty confident that, that we were modeling this area somewhat accurately. Moving into sewer shed, what we defined as sewer shed three or the Cunnable Creek Sewer Shed. Here you have quite a large area of town, again denoted by the red polygon. And a lot of combined sewers, we have sanitary flows as well as stormwater flows. Um, and looking at the profile here, I think this is, uh, we shared this before, but that Cunnable Creek pipe, uh, is not. A constant grade or, or a, a all positive grade there, we think are, there are some areas that are backgrading, the pipe size changes. And so those all negatively impact our, uh, our hydraulics, and you can see a couple of those structures there that are. Surcharging here even in that one in five year event. We did do, uh, we were asked and looked at the regional interceptor, uh, so a lot of gravity sewer runs parallel to Lick Bisquid and drains into pump station seven. Uh, we note that the design capacity from, uh, the original reports, uh, or design was 215 liters per second. Uh, we did do a, a drawdown test or a, or a capacity test, which showed a hundred and eighty-eight liters per second it was operating at. Uh, and right now there's a 450 millimeter force main, uh, that runs out to pump station one before going to the treatment plant. Uh, and the max capacity of that force main would be 480 liters per second. So there is some capacity in that force main, if you were to look at different configurations of the pump station, you could potentially. Double the capacity of the pump station, but we're talking about a few hundred liters a second, and as you'll see as we get into the options. Some of the other pumping stations we're considering are considerably larger than that. So going into our option development, uh, looking at Albert Street first. We continued to utilize the separated streets and then separate as we went downstream. To slow those flows down, we looked at a storage facility. We have a, a capacity of around a hun, uh, 715 meters cubed, apologies. That then leads to an eight hun, 1800 diameter storm pipe, so we're doubling the size of that storm pipe. As well as adding some storage upstream. We will also then provide some re-grading along Wiley Avenue to prevent overland flows from being directed to Stanis Street. And instead taking to them, to that storage pond. So really what we're looking to do here is provide additional capacity in your pipe system and redirect. Uh, overland flows away from problem areas and into areas that have more capacity to handle them. So what does that look like, you know, a few different events? On the left, we have that one in five year storm existing, that's going to look the same through all of our options. And on the right, you can see the benefits of, of, of making these upgrades. What you'll notice is that on the right-hand side, uh, where Stanis Street would be, you have a few, a little bit of an improvement, but maybe not, uh, a significant improvement. Most of these, while we're stopping overland flow from getting down to the Stanis Street area, the pipe flow really provides the benefit to the gray street area in this example or in this option. Looking at one in 10, you start to see that increase, um, in the east, or you still see, uh, a good amount of, of, of that water, that flooding in the Stanis Street area. Gray Street continues to improve, and then you can see here in our one in 100 year event, a number of red areas. Uh, in the, in the existing condition and some darker blues, we got rid of a few of those reds in the, in the Stanis Street area. But you still see a lot of darker blues, so while we're redirecting some of those overland flows areas and providing some benefit. You're still seeing flooding coming from the Stanis Street, uh, in the Cunnable Creek, uh, sewer shed. So not, uh, a holistic solution necessarily. Moving on to, I guess we'll see this Cunnable Creek, uh. Uh, profile here many times, but you do see a minor improvement in some of those smaller storm events. Through the, through, in the proposed section, uh, with the upgrades, however, you're still seeing surcharging in that, uh, in that proposed scenario. Looking at the Stanis Street side of things, we looked at a couple of different options along Stanis Street. One involving pumping, so we've, we've kind of modified our, our options here, we've developed this option four. Uh, which still involves a pump station with 10 meters cubed a second of capacity, so before we were talking about that 200 liters per second. To 400 or 500 liters per second, that is 10,000 liters per second at the maximum capacity, so while that would make a dent. This is a quite a considerable pump station with some very, very large pumps. So instead of, uh, having everything diverted around, we would introduce a combined sewer overflow connection. So that water in the low flow events would continue to drain by gravity down the Cunnable Creek pipe, however. In a large flow events, instead of getting to the surface, the overflow would be designed such that those. Additional flows would get into the pump stations and, or into the pump station and then be pumped away. So what does this do in that one in five year to, from existing to proposed, you can see that Stanis Street area goes from having some darker blues and even some reds. To just having lighter blues, so again, there are some localized areas that aren't. Based off the topography and the LiDAR, getting to drainage areas, there, the park is lower than the street. There would be potential to, in detailed design, figure out the best ways to pretend to drain those areas, to add additional drainage. Uh, but for now, what we're trying to do is prevent water that is in those pipes from surcharging out of the pipe onto the surface. So theoretically, these areas that we're showing are going to be just surface drainage as opposed to anything that's coming out of the Cunnable Creek Combined Sewer. One in 10, uh, you'll see a similar, I think, uh, incre, or benefit where you have some darker blues and even reds. On the left hand in the existing, uh, but lighter blues on the right with those upgrades. And I think what you'll notice here, especially in the one in 100, is that Albert Street, Gray Street area. Is still maybe not receiving this, the benefit that the Stanis Street area is, so that pump station with that CSO connection. Is helping out the Cunnable Creek pipe, but really not providing that same benefit over to Gray Street, so again, helpful, but not necessarily a holistic solution. Option five, oh, here's the, uh, sorry, the profile, I'm jumping ahead of myself. Again, with that combined sewer overflow, you can see here that a hydraulic grade line shown in that darker blue. Stays below the surface at all of our structures, that's really what we were looking for there, and it's what that overflow is meant to do, it's meant to prevent those pipes from surcharging to the surface. However, uh, I think we got some feedback and we spoke, uh, and, and that pumping station is a big investment, that's a lot of pump. Capacity to build in, there are operations and maintenance requirements when considering that, obviously you need power to run those pumps. And so we thought, what if we could find a gravity solution to this issue? So we looked at a stormwater connection to, or a gravity connection to the Trigothic Marsh. Now we're talking about that same 2400 by 1200, so that's eight feet by four feet dia, or not diameters, rectangular box culvert. So it's quite a large pipe, there is still a combined sewer overflow, so this pipe would not be used in low flow or dry conditions. But would come into effect where you have those larger storms and provide an avenue for those high flows to get, to be directed away from the Stanis Street area. You would only separate Stanis Street from Gray Street to the CSO. So you would still have combined sewer potentially coming into this area. And so that's something that we would have to discuss with Nova Scotia Environment before moving forward. And you could always add a pump station in the future, once, you know, you, if you decide, if there is. More separation or higher flows, there would always be the option to add more capacity. So looking at what this does, I think you're going to see some similar sort of graphics to that pumped solution. This provides that overflow, preventing the water from getting to the surface and provides it with somewhere to go before flooding occurs, so again, seeing the darker blues. And we're going to get into the reds on the left and mostly the lighter blues, uh, with some darker blues on the right. So again, we're seeing the, the flooding levels or the elevations, the depths really reduce with this option. Especially in that Stanis Street area, however, over at Gray and Albert, you're still seeing some of those reds develop. So not holistic solutions separately, which is why we get into, and then here you see that hydraulic grade line with that gravity solution. Not quite as effective as that pump solution we saw previous, however, still keeps those elevations much, much lower than they were previously. So, when you're sending water over to Trigothic Marsh, you know, we do know that there's other areas that are impacted by high water levels in these storm events. And so we wanted to make sure that we had capacity to send this water that direction. Uh, you know, you're seeing the deep reds throughout the ditch, that is because the ditch has. Capacity and depth to it itself, it's, you know, a couple of meters deep in some locations, so you're getting those reds. But really, we're not seeing an increase or a significant change in the elevations in the ditch, we're seeing this very similar. Results when we send this water over that way, so that gave us some confidence that there is capacity there. It's definitely something that as we get into detailed design, or if we proceed into detailed design for the combined sewer overflow. To continue to look at and make sure that this area isn't causing pro, or this solution wouldn't cause issues in other areas. So what do combined options look like? So the first would be the Albert Street diversion with that Stanis Street pumping station, complete with the CSO connection. And so that's going to allow your gravity drainage on the Albert Street side while also getting the pumped. Benefits on the, uh, the Stanis Street, the Cunnable Creek Combined Sewer. And so your one in five year existing on the left, starting to see those reds, some darker blues, I think you really see, uh, a decrease in the number of flooding areas. And the number, or in the depth of those flooding areas on the right-hand side. I will say, you're still seeing some, those are those low areas that while we aren't addressing them now. In the detailed design phase, you would have the opportunity to do a, a deeper dive, deeper dive into those specific areas, see if the pipes in those areas have capacity. And what opportunities there would be to add to or increase the local drainage. Moving on to the one in 10, again, you're starting to see those darker blues and reds on the left and the decrease in those types of areas on the right. And finally, in the one in 100, while some of those low-lying areas, and especially in the streets, we would expect to see some flooding in the curbed areas of your streets. But you're really not seeing those depths, uh, or the widespread depths that we were seeing on the existing condition. You do get to see those, those lighter blues, a number of those lighter blues, which is really what we want to see. And then looking at the hydraulic grade line on the left, where we see that surcharging in the Cunnable Creek pipe, on the right-hand side. You do see that that blue line stays below the surface at each of our structures, indicating that there is not a surcharge in this option. That was the pumped solution, we also looked at a combination of. That was the pumped solution. We also looked at a combination of Albert Street with the gravity connection to Trigothic Marsh. And so one in five existing on the left and you have that one in five proposed on the right, lighter blues. Still seeing a significant benefit, very similar to that pumped solution. A lot of opportunity for that water to get away before it reaches the surface. And a number of these areas are from surface flows, not from surcharging pipes or structures. One in 10, starting to see those darker blues and reds on the left, a significant reduction on the right. And finally, that one in 100, we do see some more of that surface flooding. It's a little bit more prevalent throughout, but those darker areas really are reduced with this gravity option that combines sewer overflow as well. And you'll see that in this option, there is some of those hydraulic grade lines just start to peek out over the over the surface or over the surface at those structures, but really we've reduced that flooding level quite significantly with this option. And it's something that could be further refined during detailed design once we have an ability to look at how that CSO will operate and the best elevations to set the overflow at. We wanted to show quickly what complete separation will do. So in those areas, we only separated specific areas of town in those watersheds, specific pipes. When you get to an area where you have the entire town separated, so there's combined, no more combined sewer. There are completely separate sanitary and stormwater pipes. You can really see the benefit you have. Those stormwater pipes are able to direct water away from the the current flooding areas. And you're really only seeing that localized surface flow collecting in the low spots of town. And as well, once you're completely separated, you no longer need a combined sewer overflow. You just send your stormwater straight away and your sanitary to your pumping station. So you're one in five, then you're one in 10. And finally, that one in 100, you really see the complete benefit of that separation. In both of these situations, we are directing water over to the marsh. And with that, there is the potential in the future, not as a first step, that as separation continues and as if more stormwater to be were to be sent over to the Abato in this area, you may need to consider a pump station here. Now, the benefit is that you wouldn't necessarily need two, one in town and one out. You would just have the one here. And instead of having a few hundred meters of that force main, you really only have the 10 meters required to get the water over the Abato. So in as a complete system, it is much easier to design, much easier to maintain and obviously more cost effective as well. So looking at progression, what's next? We did recommend integrated option two in our report. We said that, you know, with a gravity solution, CSO, there are a number of benefits to pursuing that gravity option with Albert Street there as well. We wanted to touch on Gray Street. One of the things that was noted was the depth of some of these pipes and the depth of excavation to make the the gravity drainage work. What we are proposing or recommending is that Gray Street actually stay connected to the Cunnamble Creek area. What that means is yes, there's still stormwater going into Cunnamble Creek, but the amount of stormwater in the catchment area that would be directed there is significantly reduced. We would also want to consider again upgrading that Cunnamble Creek to be a consistent size and slope. But we feel that there are opportunities here that Gray Street could stay in that combined sewer and that alleviates the pressure of the really deep pipes and makes the overall project more cost effective and probably more tenable for your residents and for individuals that are operating businesses on in the center of Windsor. Finally, and then here's Cunnamble Creek as well, you would want to replace the sections that are deteriorating. And we did look at multiple methods for how you would do that. There are some very tight areas, a very tight easement between some houses that this pipe runs. So we would have to get, it might not be standard cut, excavate, open up the pipe, replace it. We might get into some trenchless methodologies to make that happen. And we did check the grades. We do feel that those are feasible at a conceptual level. Looking at a phasing plan, we we ended up coming out with 11, I believe it was phases, I might be forgetting one. I think the future pump station was 12. And so that's outlined here in this big map of how we would proceed phase by phase by phase through separating the entire town. Really, the keys are areas one and two. Area one being Stannis Street and two being Albert Street. Those provide you with the most benefit. Upstream of Stannis is O'Brien, which we're fortunate enough to be starting work on as well. And so getting that separated will provide benefit to the downstream area in Stannis as well. This is incremental, depending on the order, you need different flow control measures. And because of the significance of the impact, you might have opportunities to upgrade roads, sidewalks, other utilities, do accessibility upgrades. You know, this is a pretty impactful project and there'd be efficiencies that I'm sure you could find road by road by road as you proceed through detailed design. So next steps, you know, phase one A is that first, that big box culvert out to the marsh with a CSO. We would need to talk to NSE, have them understand what we're proposing, really think about if and what they would require for approvals when we're redirecting that combined sewer flow before proceeding into, you know, that as a part of detailed design and then tender and construction. Looking at the cost, that first phase, Stannis Street with the CSO and the long, large pipe down to 18 million, where I think we were looking at the pumping station alone in our last estimate at over 30 million. So you have still a significant project, but a significantly reduced cost overall upfront. And again, the number at the bottom is for everything. This 10 or 11 phases would go through many, many years, many, many construction cycles, but going through the Stannis Street, Victoria and then Albert areas. We've been able to to focus, I guess, and make find some efficiencies in those initial project areas where you see the most benefit. I believe that's all we have. And we would be happy to answer any questions from from council if there are any.
Thank you, gentlemen. Questions, council to Aaron and Alan. Councilor Ivy.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Zabian. I've got a couple. I guess it goes, I guess the initial one goes to when we talked about this previously and it may go back even over a year, but we talked about the the initial pumping that was going to pump over to to the Trigothic Marsh. It was still in that same Victoria Park, Stannis Street area, but that was involving pumping up from there over. And so when I was reading the report and I'd missed it in the last iteration with you folks. So I'm, I guess I was a bit confused to see that we had the pumping going down Stannis as well as part of the conversation here. Can you just clarify that for me, like that shift that took place because just so you know where I'm going, that it'll maybe allow your answer better is that when looking at the the graduation of the gradation of the of the system, it looks at the very best for that Stannis area is doing that pumping down down that area. And if you've got the combination of the diversion of CSO through the marsh too, that that seemed to be like, I'd almost say it'd be like a three hit version one, two, and I can't, I don't want to try and pull the number out. There's too many there, but you know what I mean? It's the diversion of it, plus the pumping down Stannis and the Gray Street diversion too. Can you just speak to that for me?
Yeah, when we first looked at putting the stormwater into the the marsh area, we were just looking at getting rid of the volume and we weren't sure we could gravity flow into that area. So we looked at pumping as the conservative option. Then we spent more time on that option and trying to explore it more. We figured out we can get gravity flow down to that down as far as the highway and past the Abato. So pumping doesn't need to get the water from Stannis Street down there anymore. So that's why the pumping went away from that that selection process. And to get the water out to the lake, pumping is required to get over the hill and keep it above that six meter elevation. So that's why it was kept on on that option. So I don't know if I quite follow what you mean by the third option to do diversion to the marsh.
Well, diversion of the marsh is what you've spoken to already. That's me. In my mind, I'm seeing it linearly. So Gray Street, Stannis pumping down. And then I think your Trigothic Marsh option is coming further up the line, further up line from that flood area or that flood zone is where you're diverting it over. Am I not correct on that?
Yeah, we've taken all the stands from Gray Street down to O'Brien. Right. And then that'll be a CSO in that general area by the by the park and that we tied into Cunnamble Creek. Right. Would be the the water in that pipe initially. And so the grade lines that you see are the initial grade lines with just that option being done. Obviously, they'll drop as more and more separations done. And eventually the the gray line and Cunnamble Creek will just be within the pipe. Won't be surcharged at all. Okay. But that happens as more and more of the area becomes separated upstream.
Sure. And I guess, well, I mean, the other piece of it too, that that was a bit of a conflict for me is that in that regional interceptor line that goes along the waterfront with the pump station one and pump station seven. And I appreciate the analysis on what the pumps can do relative to what the capacity or, you know, how high they could go. But when that regional interceptor is full and running the numbers and I'm not as skilled at that as you folks are, but it appears that the capacity would be greater than the pump stations could keep up with. In other words, if that full interceptor pipe was full, which we've had conversation on, can those pump stations still keep up with it? Is that when we're seeing the backup coming back up through Cunnamble Creek?
We have to, I don't know if we checked those numbers. You mean that that the capacity of the gravity interceptor?
Yep, along the waterfront, if that's full, which we've heard it surcharges at various times and so on, that the capacity of those pumps wouldn't be, again, based on the diameter of the pipe and the flow of the combines we're going through there. If that isn't able to keep up with it, then that creates a totally different scenario for trying to solve that problem.
Me and staff can talk, but they they're going to have a pump station that's keep it because that that station doesn't overflow. The the new one, that's correct, right? That station doesn't. So that what's going to that station is being pumped away as it comes in now. So it doesn't surcharge at that station. It surcharges back at pump station one, which means whatever that that pump station is taking out whatever it can out of the system through that through that interceptor pipe.
Right.
We have a capacity to put a little more, to take a little more with the existing force main. But that's not like Alan said, it's not going to make any difference in the overall larger system. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll have to pull my notes on that and I'll maybe send those along, but it was my understanding that pump station seven could surcharge, in fact, that the pipe would surcharge. And of course, if you get surcharging along that that whole line, that that creates a challenge for being able to.
You mean the the main intercept going into the pump station? It does surcharge, but the station itself doesn't overflow.
Right. There is no overflow built into that. I understand that it's, so once it's surcharged though, nothing else can get into that pipe. In other words, anything going down that Stannis Street line today that combined through the Cunnamble Creek line, if it's full, nothing else can get in there, which again is going to push everything back, right? I'll see, I see Paul's got his light on and I'll reference my notes here. Thanks.
Councilor.
Just got a quick question with the numbers we're seeing. There's 2025 numbers with any inflation put in it for Twitter?
No.
That's just today's market value.
Further questions, council?
Yeah, one other.
Councilor Ivy.
Yeah, one of the the benefits that was put forward as a related to what we'll call option two. I'm not sure what the iteration is. You have to, between the two that we're looking at here, where you had benefits taking place that that the recommended one was less costly than proceeding with the pumping station. Do you have a number on that as to what that financial benefit is, benefit is comparing one to the other?
We, so you're you're pumping and I'm not going to get the numbers exactly right, but the pumping station itself was close to 30 million and the piping in and around it was another 12. But don't quote me on that. It was in and around the 10 or 12 million. So you're over 40. Sure. And then that first phase of Stannis with just gravity and a CSO, we we figure is about 18 and or 18, 18, seven, I think it was, so 19. And so you have more pipe, you have larger pipe in the gravity option, but you're saving the large diameter or the larger diameter, the larger pumps, the larger capacity pumps and the the structure, the pumping station itself. The force main, the 1800 force main, you have larger gravity pipe. But yeah, exactly.
So that's the total cost for those versus using the pump over in the marsh and having to put those other costs in there. So what's the net on that? Are you giving me net? Are you giving me?
So the pump station in the marsh is required as future flood proofing for the, I guess, the agricultural area down there, that area itself. So that's a future planned piece of infrastructure. So that was thus, but that was, so the idea would be that you don't, you could eliminate one station in Stannis Street and it's just the best in one. So you're basically eliminating half the cost. Basically, you're building one station instead of two. There's going to be a little bit more cost than that than that one, because you're going to need a little bigger pumps and probably a little bigger clear well, wet well, but very minor compared to building two separate and the operational costs of having, you know, each station of four pumps, at eight pumps, only operating four pumps instead of eight, maintaining placing four pumps in the future. The operational costs are considerably lessened in going down that road, but there isn't an actual analysis that you're asking. We could probably pull the numbers together though and give them to you for that comparison.
Absolutely. Just I wasn't aware that there was a pump pre-planned for the I'll call it Trigothic Marsh here over by the rail railway or the highway. That wasn't anything that had come up in my radar with this before I possibly missed it, or I just wasn't sure that it was new.
It probably would have been, it wouldn't have been in these reports just because this was focused on Windsor. And then we had just started to look down this other area as as an efficiency between the two two projects there.
Gotcha. Okay, so, yeah, so so what I was trying to get to was the net incremental difference in going with one over the other. And if we didn't have that other cost in there as a built in, then again, that's where I'm trying to get to is.
That was part of the Trigothic Marsh you worked two years ago, that's part of the infrastructure upgrades. Okay, planned for that. So it wasn't part of this, the Windsor stuff because of two different watersheds at that time. Now we're combining them. Right. So that takes advantage of the infrastructure that was planned.
I did notice part of the analysis, sorry, your worship, I'm just running here, right? But I did notice as part of the analysis in the mapping area that you did look at, that we didn't cover all the streets within Windsor, that some of them were left out. And I know, I think we had a separate report on Tremaine, but I'm not sure that that but that too is all part of that other streets further out, Hillsdale, Crosby, Court and the like, that there's just streets that aren't covered within your mapped area. Is there a reason for that?
Those areas would drain and I'm going to say most of them, to my knowledge, drain through that Trigothic Marsh area. They come up, they go around the way from the center of Windsor. And so in this project specifically, we were looking at the drainage areas that go towards and or through city center of Windsor. There was that other report that Aaron referenced from 2022 that looked at upgrades required for the Trigothic Marsh area. And so Tremaine and and some of those areas would be covered in that as opposed to our catchment areas that we were looking at here.
Thank you. And if I can go to timing, yeah, it's someone timing because again, didn't pick it up in the, I'll call it the initial draft and back in June. But in this one here, there's a sense of urgency that's in there underneath step, next steps and so forth. And as you know, this is something we've been working out with you folks for quite a period of time, you know, appreciably to say the least, but but those statements were looking for turnaround times, which sounded like immediately without those words, well, that certainly was a sense of it in trying to get to be a 2027 implementation or construction period. There's still a lot of work in here as it relates to assessments by agencies, Nova Scotia Environment, DFO, validation of the heights of the the piping and the inversion levels and so on. Lot of work identified in here that still needs to be done. Are we still on a path that 2027 is real or given that six months is coming on? Given that summer work is required specifically for some of these things, are we already past what I'll call that hurry up and go period of time? Like, where are we sitting with this?
I I think if, I don't think so. I think you could tender at the end of next year over the winter, so with winter 26 into 27 and build in 27 or at least start a phasing plan for 27. That is with the assumption that the NSE approvals go efficiently. We do feel that our, we have experience with NSE in a number of these types of projects and we do feel that we know sort of a strategy. Early engagement, bring them in, get comments, integrate their feedback into the design earlier rather than later. And that can make that process as as efficient as possible. So we do think, given that we're, you know, we have about a year, a year, maybe 14 months before we'd want to maybe put this to the street to to get prices from contractors, that it's possible, but it is with an assumption that we don't have any setbacks with the Nova Scotia Environment.
Also the land purchasing costs and the land purchasing agreements and those things that come in there.
All those things there is what the concern. All those things there is what the concern comes to is from a timing standpoint that we've been, we're four years at this point. There's still a year plus worth of time out there. We've still got residents that, you know, the comment about this summer has been what a great summer aside from the drought and the, and the, and the fires, at least from a rain standpoint, but you know, what a rotten summer by way of not having rain for the farmers and everybody else out there with needs for water. And so my concern as I look at this is that we've got a lot of unknowns, funding being the other item, which I didn't talk about here in order to get this, that it gets implementable. And therein lies the concern for me in any event, that I don't see those same requirements in looking at that pumping station. Although there is a significantly larger cost associated with it.
They would still be there because you're still pumping CSO into the environment. So they would still be required to discuss that with.
Environment, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Counselor Larry Pinch, you had your light on earlier. You're good? Okay, Counselor John Smith.
Thank you, your worship. So my question is around the, the gravity flow. So that's going to be a CSO going towards St. Croix River. I didn't realize that, that Department of Environment would allow that. So my question is, do they allow it?
So, and so this wouldn't be a permanent CSO discharge there. It'll be, they'd have to call temporary while their system's being upgraded. So we'll get, get an approval to allow that as part of a plant process and improving the system over a period of time. So they wouldn't allow it on a continuous basis, but if you have a plan in place and improve your system, they will allow stuff like that.
So how long would it be in place?
That's the implementation plan. So until you get sewer shed three, Santa Street sewer sheds basically separated, it would be in place. So that whatever the, the financial ability of the town or community to finance that work would be the duration of it.
Right.
And you see like one of the major areas is that O'Brien Street area, which there's a process underway there to start it. So it's underway. It is a significant area. Would be more than one construction season, would be multiple, but it would be as part of, I think, what we would have to do or what the, what the process would be with NSE, we'd have to present that plan in a little bit more detail and show them this is kind of the phasing and this is how long we anticipate this temporary situation would be in place.
It's not how much we're going to divert, when, how often, frequent it's going to be, we'd have to tell them that kind of information.
So we're looking at a number of years.
That you could be doing that.
Yeah. Yeah. My second question was around the cost. So it's 142 million. But on top of that, there's, there's construction tendering costs? Am I right?
Those are the costs.
Those are the costs.
So this, this, the number you're looking at there does include engineering fees, which would include tendering. Yeah. So you have engineering and design in there. You have even the future Abito pump station in there. So you have some costs in that 142, it would definitely include your tendering there.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Right. Not seeing any more lights on. So next steps, CAO in the budget process, something to come back to council, incorporating it into capital plans. I know we were, we were discussing earlier and back in, I think it was July, at one of our workshops, a public meeting as well on updating the public on this separate meeting, separate night focused on this. Any plans on that one yet?
Yeah. So to the first part of your question, yes. I mean, if this is more amicable, I guess, or acceptable option, I think CBCL has exercised this multiple ways and of course, you've had the benefit of the workshop as well. So I think probably this is, this is an achievable project in practicality and potentially financially. I know we have lots of challenges, but these would be phases that public works should bring forward for council's consideration in year one, two, three, four, five capital plan and maybe beyond potentially. With respect to the public meeting, we actually did check our notes and the direction was to bring them CBCL back to this environment. So we do not have a public session scheduled, but if that's the wishes of council, I'm sure we can figure that out with CBCL and we can do that. Yes.
Counsel, thoughts on public media? I was, I, I, maybe I recalled it differently, but counsel's thoughts on that while, while we're here. Counsel Ivy.
Yeah, it was, it was my understanding that we were going to come back to the public first before it came back here. That that would serve as a workshop type public session for them to understand what's going on with this project and this program. And then based on that, it would then come back to council. That was my understanding and that's what, yeah, that's, that's my understanding.
So may, maybe helpful just to a public meeting.
Okay.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen. No more lights on. We appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I know it's been a long haul. Again, you can sense the urgency on our, our end and our residents' end as well. So, all right. Perfect. Thank you very much. Next up, reports. We have the CAO rectory report update. CAO?
Your worship, Clerk Snare will add the, the written version to your package. I will slow down when we get to an update on the water. Free water program as we do have some numbers and I'm sure Deanna is over there fact checking in advance of me noting them. With respect to activities and meetings of council, you folks were all there. You're familiar with the committee, the whole council. We had a courthouse tour and a special council meeting October 7th. Other meetings in the administrative world, we had a labor management meeting with, with QP. We do that quarterly. It's just to kind of deal with ongoing issues and for the most part, we are grievance free and continue to work through any concerns the union may have at, in those settings. We continue to inform ourselves on new legislation around accommodations for employees and for the most part, our administrative policies are in alignment with new legislation, but it really enforces the employer's responsibility around accommodations, especially in the mental health world now as those, those health conditions are being prioritized a bit more, we'll say. Continue to sit on the Nova Scotia Department of Emergency Management Roundtable with respect to the creation of their emergency management regulations and so forth. Unhoused, we had an informal meeting with some of the groups in our community that are supporting the unhoused individuals and we have a up and coming meeting coordinated with, with the Posse project just to basically identify all resources that are currently in the community as we look forward, as we look toward the winter months. And I would say at this point in time, there is no concrete plan in place for a shelter over the winter and that human resources, whether they be volunteer or other forms are the primary challenge in operating that at this point in time. Again, when we meet, I don't know if we have a date. Do we have a date? It's tomorrow. There you go. So Posse will lead ourselves. I expect Caremongers and hopefully the Harvest Hosts and any other groups by invitation to talk about resources and what we might be able to do this winter. We have committed just the pool facility as that is a direction from council. And it, for the most part, is shelter ready with respect to the renovations that we did last year. It's just the volunteer and the human component. Another highlight, we've had climate action committee meeting, of course, a good number of staff attended the Net Zero Atlantic Information Session hosted by the province at the Legion on October 7th. This is where the province is sharing some of their initiatives around offshore wind and some of their larger priorities. So that was an interesting session. Some of you would have attended the Valley Regional Marketing Levy and a joint council meeting around the marketing levy. And we'll be having information coming back to council more specifically in future meetings. The water utilities. So I'll slow down a little bit in this section. So the Mill Lakes watershed continues to drop. There are some minimal stabilization. I don't want to be overly optimistic, but of course with decreased evaporation and the minimal amount of rain that we have, there's some amount of stabilization, but we still continue to see a decrease in the water levels there. And we are moving into our contingency plan as approved by council at this time. Director Shard's here if you have any specific questions. The pipe is arriving. We have a system in place for fusing it. We have a good plan. Director Shard and I met with the folks at Martok on Saturday, just to kind of revisit our relationship with them and not just physically how the pumps will operate, but timing and those things. And those folks are very cooperative and very supportive of the process. So that's a positive. Again, Director Shard can talk about mobilization and how that plan is coming together. Handsport and FALMA systems for the most part are stabilized. They are holding, I guess we'll say, the balance of outflow and inflow. So there's less of a concern, I guess, as we have with the Mill Lakes system at this time as they are somewhat stabilized. Some of the other supports that are being provided, some of which you in the room are very familiar with, the bottled water program, which of course is, is collaboration with the province, specifically they funding it, we administering it and distributing it. So just some numbers for size and scale of the uptake and the urgent need for this support. And Deanna, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we talk about the Brooklyn location, we have an outflow of about seven to 904 liter bottles per day, which translates into probably about 28, 28 pallets, possibly 35. So the, that area, I would say all areas are growing each week. Generally with the level of, of distribution that's going out. Of course, the Brooklyn location is, is direct from Scotiagold, which the feed store there, which we want to thank, and I'm sure the time will come when we'll thank those individuals for helping the distribution of that because it did take the volunteer component for the most part away from it. And that's very helpful. I was saying per day, I will switch to per week. Our Somerville and Southwest locations are comparable where we have Somerville looking at around 1,004 liter bottles, four liter bottles per week. And Southwest Hands location around the 704 liters per week, 704 liter bottles per week. Morrison Drive here per week again. Last week, as a reference, we issued 5,000 coupons. So 5,000 individual coupons for four liter bottles in one week. So that's the size and scale of this water program, which is clearly an indication of the need with respect to rural water needs in West Hans, whether they are reduced well capacities and in many cases zero capacity because wells have failed or are not replenishing themselves at all in some cases. So that's the uptake. The water haulers, I think council had the benefit of seeing some of those numbers at the October 7th meeting last week where that flow continues to support rural West Hans. And we're continuing to manage that in the same manner that we have. And then the last piece of my report is just to note that there's an upcoming police advisory board where we'll have Staff Sergeant Nugent there for, for his first meeting. So some of the highlights, your worship. If there's any questions, probably a combination of folks in the room, we'll do our best.
Thank you so much. CAO, Counselor Larry Pinch.
Through your worship, I think this is going to end up being to Director Rashard. But I'm just curious, we did some salinity testing and we're saying the pipes have been moved up there. So does that mean we've received the salinity testing back and we're good to go?
Thank you through you, Mayor. So we have received our, our first round of testing today. We're still analyzing the data, but we do see some increased salinity levels. Nothing too concerning as far as the dilution factor. Once it enters that large body of water at Mill Lakes and then flows, you know, 10 kilometers through the lakes and in the streams before it reaches the water treatment plant. But we are working with, with other regulatory agencies to see if we can lower the impact of those salinity levels before we're ready to start pumping water. So it's probably going to be, you know, minimum two to three weeks before we're ready to proceed to pumping. So, and we'll continue to monitor that the water standard analysis at the Avon River intake in the meantime.
Perfect. Any other questions? Counselor Ivy.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. And it would be related to the comment by the CAO as it relates to the mobilization. So through you to Director Rashard, if I could. The volume or the number of pipes, and I think it's a, is it a plastic weld? Can you just let us know what it is that we need to do in order to get those connected to the, the scheme Martok pipeline and then through what, what kind of work is involved with that, Director Rashard?
Sure. So I'll try to be as, as very basic. So the Martok system is a steel pipe, eight inch steel pipe. So we're going to cut into that pipe, put a T on that, that pipe, a valve it. And then what we refer to as a mechanical flange on the HDPE plastic pipe. So we'll flange it. And then we'll fuse this pipe. So the fusing is essentially you clean the pipe by cutting it, shearing it. Make sure it's a nice, clean, square surface. And then you put a, a hot iron in the middle of it, heat the pipe up. You take the iron out and then hydraulically squeeze that HDPE pipe together. And it fuses by melting the pipe, it fuses it. So we are renting the equipment. We now have four of our own staff certified to fuse HDPE pipe. So they will be, we're renting two fusers. So we'll be doing that. We're hoping to do thousand foot segments. So we can fuse a thousand feet together. We can move it by our loaders and our equipment. And then we'll mechanically join the next thousand feet. So a combination of fusing and mechanical joints and approximately 2,800 to 3,000 meters of pipe from the Martok system to the, the discharge point at Mill Lakes.
Okay. Counselor Larry Pinch.
Through your worship, just out of curiosity, because we purchased the, the pipe now, I assume, based on that. And we kind of have an idea of how we're going to put it together. Are we still on budget to stay within the amount that was initially circulated?
Early, early in the process, but currently we are on budget, hoping you know, we have some contingencies in there. It's looking like we won't need the, the relay pump. So that may give us a little bit of buffer. Heard our hydraulic analysis did indicate that we should go with all eight inch pipe versus some eight and six. So by going to all eight inch pump has increased my cost a little bit, but I'm certainly hoping to stay within that, that budget that I proposed last Tuesday night. Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, CAO. All right. We are at eight o'clock, council. We'll take a 10 minute break and we'll come back at that point. All right. Welcome back, everybody. It's eight twelve PM, Tuesday, October fourteenth. I'm resuming this session of the West Ham Region Municipal Committee of the Hall. To continue correspondence, number 10 on the agenda, we have a couple of pieces of received correspondence, Todd James, Presidential Ways Collection.
Here's Avian.
Sure.
Uh, we have the dangerous or unsightly.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. Danger is not slightly April first, twenty twenty five to August three first, twenty twenty five. Anything that's on dangerous and unsightly counsel that anybody wanted to discuss at this point? Nope. All right. We'll continue on. And correspondence, another one from Jan Simpson, CUPW National President. That's regarding Canada Post, I believe. And then amendments through the Municipal Modernization Act for Department of Municipal Affairs sent that one. So we appreciate anybody who sends in correspondence. If anybody wants to bring a report after the fact, we'll we'll take those at another time. Send correspondence. We have nothing on this agenda. So new business exploring municipal support for residents with dried failed wells, councillor Remy.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to read through the report. It's just about the reoccurring drought conditions or whatever, or the drought conditions that we have here. I'm just, I was hoping that we could maybe have direction for staff to do a report just to gather some information, like not spend money at this point, but to gather some information on a program to help support anybody who's having some issues with their wells. There are actually, in the report too, I did give some examples of some other municipalities that are doing stuff, including Argyle, which has the Well Upgrade Assistance Program. Chester offers a 10 year on tax bill loan for well upgrades and East Hans has considered similar programs in their water supply management plan. So, yeah, it's just, hopefully, everybody's read everything, but I think it would be very beneficial to some of the rural residents that are experiencing, especially given the numbers that CAO just gave to us here not too long ago.
Perfect. Are there questions on the report before councillor Remy makes a motion? Councillor Ivy?
Thank you, worship. No, I actually, I appreciate the report. I think it's very valuable, given what we've seen take place over the last several months and what we've seen by way of discussion that we've had here. And I guess just in light of part of that and and part of that conversation, at one point, it was viewed that maybe the bulk water haulers were providing water throughout the region that was not an area that was accounted for within our capacity within the water utilities. And so I might ask or suggest as part of the report and the information that comes back that we understand, at least specifically between Windsor and Falmouth, I'm not sure, I've never heard of Hansport having its own bulk hauler pumping station, but just to know what the capacity is within those systems by way of water. Because that's the reason that we're, I think, looking at this is finding ways to assist with that. So how great is our capacity for being able to help with that? And so it's just, it's just added information as it goes to if we're looking at finding ways to further fund it, how far can you fund it? And I think that would be would be good to know as part of that.
Any further questions on the report? All right, we're at your whim, councillor Remy at this point.
So I'll just make the motion, the committee, the whole. I guess we're recommended to council to direct that council direct staff to prepare a report on the feasibility feasibility of establishing a municipal program to support residents experiencing well failures, including a review of models used in other Nova Scotia municipalities.
Motion is made by councillor. Seconded by councillor Paul Whedon. Discussion on the motion, councillor McLean. Okay, councillor Leary Pinch.
Thank you for your worship. I was just going to comment that I have had a couple of emails in over the past 12 months from residents that highlight these programs in other municipalities. And then I went and did some of my own research prior to your report. And I do know there's been a fair few, because I I guess I didn't understand, because I purchased a host that already had a well, but that you can pay, you know, up to $30,000 for exploration and not find water. So then you are left with nada. So it would be nice to be able to provide some support by way of a loan program or something of that nature to assist residents so that you know, they kind of have some support without drilling the wells ourselves.
Absolutely. I think it's a good thing, more proactive measures are are not a bad thing, especially if we all hope we don't get another season like this season, but indications are going that it could be more frequent. Well, cisterns, I think these things in the rural areas will be highlighted more and more and more as the years go on. It's it's not a, it's good to be proactive and 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 provide support to all of our residents. Yeah. With that, I see, nope, councillor Paul Morton.
So I got a question for the CEO, but you're right on the spot tonight. So our financial rate that we borrow money from now, seven percent. So would an individual be able to borrow money from the bank, less than what we could lend it to them? Because there is a seven percent, I'm sure you can get a bank loan for less than that.
So you're asking me a finance sort of question on interest rates. So that wouldn't be applicable to this program, because the asset, we can only borrow money on an asset that we own and operate. So but back to the interest rate, I guess it's equal to or stronger than. Now, we could also look at like the Home Flood Protection Pilot Program, where if we had a pool of funding that we wanted to put on the table, could help supplement our larger pool. Or we fund it directly based on our financial capacity, which is similar to what we're doing with the Switch West Hans or the Pace. But we have a financing rate set in that world. So I don't know what individuals' interest rates are, because it depends on all kinds of things, as you know. But probably won't get any better rate than we achieve.
Definitely something that will pop up in the report anyways. Councillor Leary Pinch.
I was just going to comment in response to councillor Morton, just from a different perspective. So in all likelihood, I could go to the bank and get a loan for a cheaper interest rate. But there are many of residents in rural areas who are on fixed incomes or who are in situations that wouldn't necessarily be approved for a bank loan. Whereas if the municipality assisted, they that's something that they could, you know, feasibly pay back.
Definitely a good discussion for another day. Yep, absolutely. When the report comes back, we'll have all the information in front of us. And if that's the way council chooses to go tonight and subsequently council. So seeing no more lights, I'll just read the the recommendation one more time for council's vote. Council direct staff prepare a report on the feasibility of establishing a municipal program to support residents experiencing well failures, including a review of models used in other Nova Scotia municipalities. We put the vote up on the screen. Motion's passed. Thank you very much, everybody. Next on the agenda, review of utility assistance rebate policy, councillor Remy.
Thank you, Chair. Similar, hopefully, everybody's had the opportunity to read the report. This here mostly speaks, I understand that we have a bulk water rebate right now. The deadline for that, I think, ends July thirtieth or the end of July. And people can apply for that every year to get some of the money back that they paid on the bulk order. But this one here is more along the lines, I'm hoping that we can find ways that we can help residents in real time to offset the costs of the bulk water haulers coming and delivering water. So the purpose, I guess, is just to look at the existing utility assistance rebate policy, which right now it's created to help people with like on municipal water and sewer and just see if we can expand it to include some help for the bulk water users.
I think the utility assistance rebate is for everybody, whether you have a, you're a bulk water customer or a sewer water customer, right? So both both can apply.
Okay. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, yep.
The So I guess, I guess the whole point of this though is to help people in real time. So right now, like the calls that I have been getting, and I'm sure everybody else as well, is about like covering costs in the, as they're coming through, not waiting until July or whatever to get reimbursed for those costs, because a lot of people on the fixed income and just lower income families are really finding it difficult to have, you know, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and thirty dollars every time they get their water filled. So that, yeah, and the you, that's the point of this. So that's what I'm hoping council would consider doing.
Okay. Questions, councillor Scott McLean.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I was out there, though I've had a lot of residents reach out that have like a a tank on the back of their vehicle just to get some bulk water and it's they're being denied. So I know it's causing a lot of grief in the community. I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, I don't think it's so much being denied. I think the staff are managing the municipal water supply. That communication was sent out to to help manage it and keep it very focused and solely on those. I think there's many, many, many registered bulk water haulers currently. So that go through the inspection process, I think Director Richard has spoken to in the past, but not that they're being denied, it's just right now currently under the mandatory order, staff are trying to manage manage the system and and ensure there's water for everybody. So any more questions on the reports, councillor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to be sure, because perhaps I misunderstood the exchange between yourself and councillor Remy. But and I don't want to speak for councillor, but your assistance here is intended to be for the people with wells that have gone dry, that are having to rely on the bulk water carriers more. Am I correct in that? And I don't know that that's built into the program that they'd have the ability to apply for assistance. So I just wanted to, before we go too far on this, I maybe I misunderstood, and if I did, correct me and I'll stop because I know my comment in the last. I had him on the agenda, I commented about the volume, which I was, I had my reports reversed, Chair, and I'm just going to leave it at that. But on this, I just think it's important that we be clear that what the request is, is for the people buying bulk water, they have the ability to apply. But I don't know how we would ever manage that unless, so I just, if I can say that, and I'll leave it for councillor Remy and or you to clarify.
Councillor Remy.
Yeah, I just want to kind of add, I guess it's expanding the program so that there maybe is like vouchers that people could use towards the like towards their water deliveries and those types of things, like something that can happen in right now, in the now kind of thing, not something that they have to wait until, as I said, to apply in July of every year and get a rebate that way. So, yeah, I just would like staff to look at ways that we can incorporate those things, so people can have the benefit of it in the moment and not wait, if that makes sense, what I'm saying.
So so I guess it's 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 an allocation of what they would have been awarded through the rebate program, but in real time rather than once a year. I could be wrong, but CAO, you got your light on.
It's just a little background to clear things up a little bit. So it is offered, so our rebate is It's just a little background to clear things up a little bit. So it is offered, so our rebate is for property taxation and sewer water utility related items, including bulk water. So let's just talk about the bulk water. So right now, if you are a resident with a household income below the value set in the policy, you are eligible. So that may or may not address some of the folks that you're thinking about. But right now, if your household income is below that threshold, then you are eligible for the various rebates, including up to a maximum of $200 for bulk water that was hauled in the previous year. So this is Councilor Remy's, I think what she's trying to highlight here is that you can get a maximum of 200 from the municipality, but you get it a year later when you come in to pay your taxes next year. You show us the receipts, which are equal to or greater than $200 and we give you $200 off of your taxes. We give you a rebate. She's expressing the need for something now. Now, whether it's for more households, we'll explore that if council gives us direction, but it is offered currently to bulk water households and customers, but in the manner I described.
Any more questions on the report? Councilor Paul Morton?
So I have another financial question because they're not here tonight. So, so if I remember right, 1,000 liters of water for a bulk carrier is $9.17.
Yeah, so our rate, so I gave you an example only for comparison's sake, but yes. Well, I don't know what a bulk water hauler delivers, what you're buying.
If there are 5,000 liter tank, which most of them are, it costs a bulk water hauler $45.85 per tank load.
Depending on the size of the tank.
If it's 5,000.
$9.19 per.
Quick masses, $45.85 for 5,000 liters, which most of them are. We can't control what they sell it for. We can control what we sell it for.
Correct, correct. Correct. That was some of the rationale rebate last time around, but I think Councilor Remy is just highlighting some of the challenges with it. I will also say it's been used minimally this year, meaning receipts from last year. And every individual that received a rebate last year, generally because of the household income, and we have a history with folks usually because of the tax rebate, they are reminded of all the other things that they're eligible for as well at that time. But whether it's the uptake or just the lack of participation, I think when I asked, there was two households this year that used it, which this was last year, but this is first year for the application policy. So there's gonna be some uptake, but it could be not effective. That's why people are not using it, or it could be all kinds of other reasons.
It's, it's very similar to the, when we did the, the household income residential tax rebate, our first year, it was very, very minimal. And then when council up the amount and increased the household income threshold, the program took off. So it could be very similar to, to this one. And I remember last year getting the word out, people just didn't know it existed. So I think this year may, may show a little different, but I have Counselor John Smith and then Counselor Leary Pinch here.
Thank you, your worship. Another question for the CAO. It's a finance question. If you don't know, that's okay. How is the rebate program financed? Is it through the water utility or is it through taxes?
The tax side, I know this will be reported visibly. I guess I assume the same as with utility.
Both are recorded, we couldn't provide the rebate for bulk water or waters or, or anything water related. The rebate wouldn't allow us to do it on the water utility side of things. So it went on the general rate, same as the household income or residential tax rebate as well. So it's all on the general rate.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Councilor Leary Pinch.
Thank you. Through your worship. Might seem like a silly question, but is it an and or an or with the rebates for all of those items? So is it like a, if you got a bulk water rebate and you got a residential tax rebate, you can get both? Or you can only get one or the other?
It's an and.
It's an and, thank you.
Two different programs. So the bulk water and sewer, that's, that's the same rebate. So those who are on the municipal water supply could apply for the sewer rebate. Those who are on the bulk water side of things could apply for the bulk water. I think that's why Carly came with the utility rebate rather than sewer, bulk water, et cetera. So.
No, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that one didn't like preclude you from being able to receive the other.
Absolutely. All right, seeing no more lights, Councilor Remy on the report. Did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, sure. Recommend that council direct staff to review the utility assistance rebate policy and explore ways that it could be expanded to support residents who rely on water haulers because of drought, failed wells, and then report back with recommendations.
Moved by Councilor Remy, seconded by Councilor Paul Whedon. Discussion on the motion. Councilor Paul Morton.
Just a question, expansion, what do you mean by expansion? Cause it's already there.
Expanding the options available, like looking at the voucher programs and those types of things, right? Just explore ways that we could. Sorry, does that make sense? I can rephrase the motion.
He's nodding there. Me, me personally, I, I think the rebate program speaks for itself. I think, I think if council was to go to the assistance for, for rural residents, I think the more funding we could put into the dry wells, well cisterns, I think that would be more, more effective on my end. But motion has been made. It has been seconded. That council direct staff to review the utility assistance rebate policy, explore ways it could be expanded to support residents who rely on water haulers because of drought and failed wells and report back with recommendations. If we can put the motion up on the screen, Clerk Snare. Motion has passed. Thank you very much, everybody. We have next on the agenda, Advisory Committee Member Appointments Recommendation Report, Clerk Snare.
Thank you, your worship. This evening before you, council is six recommendations for vacancy appointments on different advisory committees. One of them would be the Police Advisory Board. The other vacancy is the Planning and Heritage Advisory Board. There is also a vacancy on the Climate Action Committee as well as three recommendations for appointments on the Audit Committee. And the report was circulated previously to you, so happy to answer any questions regarding it.
Thank you so much, Clerk Snare. It's good to see a lot of people stepping up. Uh, Councilor Paul Morton.
So I see the police advisory one is for October 28th, but we meet Monday. Can we change the date to Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seeing no more lights, if somebody wishes to make the recommendation, uh, Councilor Leary Pinch.
That committee of the whole recommends that council approves Carla Rafus be appointed to the Police Advisory Board for the term October 28, 2025 to October 31st, 2027. Council approves Dave Moore be appointed to the Planning and Heritage Advisory Committee as a Windsor representative for the term October 28, 2025 to October 31st, 2027. Council approves Lisa Seeson to be appointed to the Climate Action Committee for the term October 28, 2025 to October 31st, 2027. Council approves Lachlan McKenzie be appointed to the Audit Committee for the term October 28, 2025 to October 31st, 2027. Council approves Nicole Hubley be appointed to the Audit Committee for the term October 28, 2025 to October 31st, 2027. And council approves Vicky Robertson be appointed to the Audit Committee for the term October 28, 2025 to October 31st, 2027.
Moved by Councilor Leary Pinch, seconded by Councilor Paul Morton for the discussion on the motion. All right, we will put a vote up. I'll just, I'll just, just say the names just so council knows. Carla Rafus to the Police Advisory. Dave Moore to the Planning Heritage Advisory, Lisa Seeson to the Climate Action Committee, Lachlan McKenzie to the Audit Committee, Nicole Hubley to the Audit Committee, and Vicky Robertson to the Audit Committee. If we can put that vote up on the screen, Clerk Snare. Motion has passed. Thank you very much, everybody. Next on the agenda, design exceedance, Windsor and Falmouth Interconnection Recommendation Report, Project Engineer Bauder.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to councilors. So I have two reports this evening. The first one is for a design exceedance for the Windsor and Falmouth Interconnection. And I know that anytime there's an exceedance in cost, that it's not an ideal place to be in, but my goal tonight is to kind of walk through the information and work that's been done to this point, along with the recommendation for consideration. So a bit of background, council awarded the design of this project to CBCL on September 26, 2023. So it's been going on for some time. Council has identified this water infrastructure expansion project as a priority in support of population growth and development. The interconnection is one of the critical path efforts that will support continued residential and business development within the Falmouth, Windsor and Three Mile Plain Growth Centers. The main objective for connecting the Windsor and Falmouth Water Distribution Systems is to supplement water supply from the Windsor System to the Falmouth System to support the daily demand along with development growth. And the system interconnection will also support regulatory redundancies required for the Falmouth Water Treatment Plant without the requirement of significant upgrades to the existing system. And also it will eliminate the need to raise the existing dam levels within the French Millbrook watershed. So there are long-term cost efficiencies through this project. And it's really a two-way system. So depending on the, the needs of Falmouth and Windsor, the, the system can feed either direction. So CBCL's original design scope consisted of the design of a booster station along with a pressure reducing valve. So again, depending on the direction of flow, it will need to be boosted one direction and actually reduced in pressure if it's flowing the other direction. And the original scope allowed for the design of 800 meters of interconnecting pipe between the two systems. The siting analysis for the booster station was significantly more complicated than we anticipated originally. They looked at three different sites, one in Windsor and two in Falmouth. And so those were analyzed with various degrees of geotechnical review, engineering modeling and stakeholder engagement. And ultimately, none of these sites were deemed to be suitable. So the original RFP allowed for one location for the booster station. And we had three locations that ended up all not working out. So a decision was made to determine the feasibility of citing the booster station at the end of Station Lane in Falmouth. And that's further away than the original design. It's actually 815 meters further than originally planned for. So basically the length of the transmission main design was doubled through that entire process. Uh, the good thing about the Station Lane site is that it does meet the geotechnical and hydraulic requirements for the booster station. And it also has an advantage of being owned by ourselves. So there would be some cost savings by not having to acquire land in the future. So due to this prolonged process leading to Station Lane as the selected site, CBCL incurred additional costs. And those are related to the siting analysis, extra geotechnical investigation work, extra surveying and traffic control, along with the detailed design for all of that. And there were also additional costs associated with planning for contaminated soil. Uh, we found out that there was contamination in the past related to the Petro-Canada. And they also incorporated the existing bulk water station at the end of Station Lane into the new booster station design. So all of those things led to extra costs. I did include CBCL's request in Appendix A, and it lists everything in great detail. The original request was for an additional amount of $84,000. And although that cost did represent the actual costs incurred by CBCL, they did agree to lower their request to $50,000 following a detailed review and negotiations with Public Works Management. So the recommendation is to approve this reduced fee increase since the scope changes are valid and could not have been anticipated during the proposal stage. CBCL has shown good faith in working with WHRM through the design and financial challenges posed to date. I will note that uh, CBCL's request should have ideally been made earlier. I think that we would all agree with that. There were some challenges with staff turnover in my position. So there were two project engineers before me that were involved with this project. And there was a, a gap in time of approximately three months in between myself and the last project engineer. Um, another note is that uh, the additional length of transmission main would have been required as a future project, like a phase two to this project. So it's not like it's all wasted effort. And I guess we could see a silver lining that there's cost efficiencies because now both phases will be combined into one tender process. CBCL's original proposal included $10,200 for tender phase services. So they are keeping to that original costing. And the project is expected to go to tender later this fall or in the early winter. CBCL's tender phase services are being included as a secondary recommendation in this report. And their construction administration services will be included along with the construction award recommendation in a future report. So when we actually tender the, the project and are ready to bring the construction award, we'll include a secondary recommendation for CBCL's construction administration work at that time. So Carly provided this chart for the financial implications. Uh, basically the two costs, the one for the additional fees and then the other for the tender phase services add up to $62,586. And this project was being funded 358,000 through the Sustainable Services Growth Fund and the rest of the project through long-term borrowing. So basically what it means is that we'll be using a little bit more money out of the Sustainable Services Growth Fund to, to fund these items. And the funding must be utilized by March 31st, 2026, so this fiscal year. So that is the, the information and there's two recommendations. The first one is related to the design exceedance and the second one to the tender phase services.
Thank you very much, Manager Bauder. Questions to Manager Bauder. Councilor Leary Pinch.
Through your worship. So just for simplistic sake, this is money that's already been spent. So we're just asking that we approve paying them a bill that we've already incurred.
Yes, the, the month, or the, the level of effort has been incurred. And like I said, they should have brought this to our attention earlier, but here we are. And all I can do is present the facts now.
Has it been made clear since they are a contractor that we seem to use on a frequent basis that in the future that would be the requested process?
Yes, definitely. We had that discussion and it should have gone through a change order process, like a more formal process. And again, the kind of the interruptions in, in staffing probably led to some of that lack of communication. Thank you.
Councilor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to add to that, I think when we initially approved this a couple of years ago, 23, two years ago, that that even in the quoting process, staff got them to reduce some items out of there. And I think one of them was the sighting processor was noted as being something that they would. So they went forward and they did this and that would have triggered, that should have triggered the change order right away, but it didn't. And we've got it and we're a couple of years behind because I think it was a 24 construction season for this. So so in that regard, I don't, you know, I mean, it's, the bill should be paid. And I think the only thing that's new is the tender piece of this, right? Which I don't think is you know, is, it's incidental to what, what we're dealing with here, I think. So I think it's the right thing to pay them the amount and as Counselor Larry Pinch. And as Counselor Larry Pinch has identified, that you've already had the conversation. So I think that's a good thing, and away we go.
Counselor John Smith?
Thank you, your worship. So my question revolves around the the site on Station Lane. You mentioned contaminated soil. So what has to be done there?
So the the contaminated soil will be actually along Highway One in front of Petro-Canada. So now that we're aware of it, and there's consulting reports and monitoring stations in that area. So there's a lot of information that we found out. And CBCL, they also have an environmental division. So they're incorporating extra language and extra clauses into the tender document. So that will be protected more during that part of construction.
Okay, is this lane that's, let's say, under the highway or is it, is it on their property or?
Yeah, so definitely their own property was contaminated and and cleaned up. But under the highway, there is also contamination that's likely. So when we trench along that section, it's anticipated that we'll run across some of it.
Okay, and just a second question. There was some comments about having to to adjust the building that the that the bulk water is housed in. Do you do you think that will require a significant cost or is that something that's just very minor?
Yes, so through the mayor, that work has been done during the design process. So instead of having a new booster station along with a bulk water station in the same small cul-de-sac, we've incorporated the the bulk water station into the booster station. And the the haulers will still have the same type of connection point outside of the the new building. But it just made for a more efficient solution for that.
Okay, so there's no not going to be any added cost to that?
That's correct. It's it's already part of the $50,600.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Counselor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up, but it kind of relates to the question asked by Counselor John Smith. So the routing on this, like the sighting, I think it said began in Windsor, and then we moved over to Falmouth to see if there was something closer, albeit longer from where we originally thought. So on this, are we coming along the number one from the bridge? Are we coming around via the causeway in order to get to the booster station? What's our route on this at this point?
So through the mayor, the the routing would be alongside the bridge, like the the pipes will be attached to the to the bridge structure.
And if I could, we have approval for that already because I thought I'd heard that we couldn't do that, that that's typically not permitted. Typically, it's not permitted to hang water pipes off a bridge. Am I correct or incorrect in that? Am I?
So there is an approval process through Nova Scotia Public Works. And they they do allow those connections. They're just very stringent in their requirements. So we have submitted the application, I believe, two or three weeks ago. And that's one approval. The other approval will be Nova Scotia Environment.
Thank you. So we're still waiting on approval for that?
Yes, they are currently reviewing the application.
Okay, so if they, if by any chance that that does not clear, we would then need to go around the causeway route? Is that like, or do we have any contingency in effect for this?
We we definitely anticipate receiving approval. I don't think the causeway would be Plan B. If we had to go to a different option, it would be directional drilling under the river.
Okay, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Any more questions? Seeing no lights, we do have two recommendations up on the screen, counsel, Counselor Larry Pinch.
That Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve an additional $50,060 before applicable taxes to CBCL Limited for changes to the design phase scope of the Windsor and Falmouth Interconnection Project.
By Counselor Larry Pinch, seconded by Counselor Paul Whedon, discussion on the motion. See no lights. So let's reread it there, or that Council, Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the additional $50,060 before applicable taxes to CBCL Limited for changes to the design phase scope of the Windsor-Falmouth Interconnection Project. Put the vote up on the screen, Clerks there. Motion's passed. Thank you very much. We have a second recommendation in that report, counsel. Somebody wishes to make that. Counselor Paul Whedon.
Committee of the Whole recommend that council approve $10,200 before applicable taxes to CBCL Limited for tender phase services for the Windsor and Falmouth Interconnection Project.
Moved by Counselor Paul Whedon, seconded by Counselor Larry Pinch. I noticed she waited till she magnified that a little bit, Counselor Whedon. It was still small with my glasses on, so, all right. Seeing no more lights for discussion, the motion is that council approved $10,200 before applicable taxes to CBCL Limited for tender phase services for the Windsor and Falmouth Interconnection Project. Motion's passed. Thank you very much, everybody. Next on the agenda, RFP Award Integrated Resource Plan. Manager Bowder, you're up again.
All right, thank you. I'll jump right into the background here. So on August 7 of this year, the Public Works Department issued an RFP for engineering services from pre-qualified consultants. And it's for the creation of an Integrated Resource Plan, or an IRP, for West Hans Regional Municipality. The IRP's purpose is to deliver a robust data-driven roadmap for infrastructure planning and investment over a 25-year horizon, directly supporting sustainable growth, regulatory compliance, and enhanced quality of life for our residents. The IRP will focus primarily on our water and wastewater infrastructure. And there's also a secondary focus on stormwater management, which would really be to integrate the existing studies and priorities that we have CBCL presented earlier today. So integrating all of that into our 25-year plan and also transportation and asset management focuses as secondary focuses. The IRP will enable WHRM to operate more strategically, sustainably, and efficiently, delivering better value to the community while making the most of limited resources. And in the report, it lists nine key benefits. So I won't get into all of it, but just the headings are long-term sustainability, improved decision-making, strategic investment, transparency and accountability, better service delivery, a holistic resource management approach, enhanced coordination, risk management and resilience, and regulatory and policy compliance. So in terms of the project's schedule, we're hoping pending approval of this report by Committee of the Whole and council later this month to have a kickoff meeting the week of September 2. Following that, there would be a process for background data review, so that will take about three months. The consultant will then perform a detailed analysis that will be from February to July next year with the goal of submitting the draft IRP in August of next year. After that, there will be a a process where we review and have a workshop with the consultant in September and submission of the final IRP proposed for November next year. So in terms of the discussion, we received three submissions. And they were evaluated by actually two departments, the Engineering Department as well as the Planning Department. There were four, four staff members that were part of the evaluation process. And the the criteria for the technical scoring are shown on the screen. In total, they value 70 points, and then the costing was based on 30 points. So the three vendors that submitted proposals are shown in this chart. CBCL, Dylan, and WSP. The chart shows the proposal cost and then the total score. So again, the the financial scoring was based out of 30, where WSP would have received 30 out of 30. And CBCL would have received about a point behind, I think it was 29 out of 30 for the costing. And then when you combine the the scores, it leads to CBCL at 94.4. And the others are also shown. I'll just add a few notes that CBCL had a deeper team with more experience. So we looked at the project team itself. How many years the the engineers have who are being proposed in the the work? We looked at the the similar experience for each of the consultants. And the proposed scope was also an important part. So all of those components were considered. And in the end, when it came to the technical score, the four staff did come to an agreement that CBCL would add the the best value for this particular project. The financial implications, the tender pricing for the award recommendation would be $229,795. WSP did actually help with providing the scope of work. So they worked with staff in preparing the RFP document, and they were still able to bid on the work itself. So their cost to date was $5,500. And that leaves a contingency value of 2.4%. I know that is a pretty strange number to include. Usually, we ask for 15%. But in this case, we are trying to stay within the approved budget. And we're just allocating the available budget to contingency in case there's any scope changes when after the work begins. So yeah, the chart kind of summarizes that the total project costs equal the budget value of $250,000. I should actually have pointed out that the the funding is coming from the Housing Accelerator Fund. And that's action item nine through the the planning process there. So two recommendations, the first would be for the main award. And then the second was for the engineering contingency amount.
Thank you, Engineer Bowder, Counselor Larry Pinch.
Thank you, through your worship. So it's a bit of a paradox that WSB had the experience to assist us in doing the tender. But in the technical scoring, felt that they didn't have the engineering experience to complete the project. Is that? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, so through the mayor, that could be viewed as a paradox for sure. We were we expected the the methodology from WSP to be more robust than it was. So all of the staff felt that CBCL's, both their depth of team and experience and the methodology were a lot more detailed. And so that's why the technical scoring turned out the way it did.
Counselor Ivy?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Paradox. I my my position on this would have been to lean towards the lower bidder. And and only based on, we've seen these things before, where lower bidder and potential risk with choosing a higher bidder. And and while we break the scores out according to three categories of, you know, price and a couple of other items, the to know that the lower bidder actually participated in the development of the scope. And we've seen that before. And it is just, it's it's an odd situation. I won't be supporting this. I don't know why we allowed them to assist in the scope and then also bid on it. I just, I don't know. Again, that's not the first time we've had to deal with that here, but that's that's a stance I'll be taking on it.
Any further questions on the report, counsel? We do have two recommendations up on the screen. Somebody, Counselor Paul Whedon.
Use my screen this time. Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the award of the Integrated Resource Plan to CBCL Limited for the price of $229,795 before applicable taxes.
Moved by Counselor Paul Whedon, seconded by Counselor Bonnie Smith for the discussion on the motion. No lights. The motion on the on the floor is Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the award of the Integrated Resource Plan to CBCL Limited for a price of $229,795 before applicable taxes. We put that vote up on the screen, Clerks there. And the motion is defeated five to five, two, four, five, five and five. All right. Doesn't, we don't need a second recommendation for that. Is there other, is there further direction from council on that report at this point? CEO?
Well, council has alternatives. So I would hope that council sees the merit in the project itself and the value that it does bring. I guess staff have expressed their opinions on the scoring. I don't think anyone has spoke to any of them not being capable. So I would suggest you've got two other options there to be considered. If you'd like for this work to proceed.
Not seeing any lights at this point. We'll let it stew for the time being. And if anybody has a change of mind, that council, we we can address it then. All right. Okay. All right. Next up, public comment period. There's five minutes allotted today. If anybody in the public or the gallery wishes to speak on any matter on tonight's agenda, come on up. We'll get you to state your name for the record there.
Amanda Dunfield. Thank you, counsel, for letting me attend tonight and speak. A couple of items I wanted to speak to that were on the agenda. One was CBCL's presentation, and I just wanted to perhaps point out that at approximately 11 minutes after seven, Aaron spoke about the lake, the impact of the lake levels on the system performance. And certainly, this is something I've spoken to before, and I had already received information on in in sort of my journey of finding out what was happening. Really thrilled to finally see the report. No surprises, unfortunately. So what I found interesting about this is that despite this being a previously known fact that the lake levels do have an impact on this system, they do somewhat impact frequency and severity of these CSO events. I'm not informed to ask questions, but I guess I just, I find it interesting that this council, realizing that the state of emergency was was instituted on or about June 1 of 2023, and that since that time, the lake levels have been typically held higher than they had been in the time previous when that reservoir was being held full. And of course, you know, we've seen more CSOs in rain events. You know, since 2021, granted, but in saying that, we know it has an impact. So what is interesting to me or what I find intriguing is if we know this is having a negative impact, if we know this might be potentially increasing severity of damages to the town, and that means municipal assets, that means the parks, that means the homeowners, it might be prudent to have a conversation with the province. Because we are looking to this municipality as an entity, and that would include management and council, to keep us safe. I mean, that is, that is one thing a municipality is tasked with, is sort of providing a safe environment. So I always found it curious how that conversation had never occurred. And then again, to borrow the word paradox- And then, again, to borrow the word paradox, the paradox of hearing burying the abattoir gates to decrease the salinity, because of course, you know, as we're changing water levels for one project, we're potentially having a negative impact that is costing this municipality money. So that was just an observation. So that occurred at about 7:11. It's not, it's it's not new knowledge. However, I don't think it's knowledge that some have been willing to accept. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. My second item that I I wanted to speak to was the CIO's report with respect to his comments about mill lakes. I had actually initiated conversations with water and street, water and sewer treatment managers several months ago, because I had concerns about the state of water infrastructure for Windsor through Mount Plains. And one is someone who managed facilities, federally operated facilities. So he managed federally operated sewer and water treatment facilities. A few independents who just, you know, are basically like, I'm just going to, you know, random water treatment specialists. And then most recently today, someone who came highly recommended to me, who was telling me he goes to international water symposiums, he's probably met Todd. And he's worked internationally in designing treatment facilities. And sort of in those conversations with those number of individuals, a few things have been brought to my attention. So when I heard the about the water transfer planned, I I have some concerns, and I have asked questions of those concerns. And I just sort of wanted to perhaps say, I was a bit concerned that we didn't talk about the contaminant and salinity testing prior to approving the purchase, and whether or not there had been any talk or consideration as to if we find something that is of a limitation in our treatment plant. We have a great treatment plan. We have great staff. We know this. But what if in that non-protected watershed, of which some of us have lived here many years, and we know of many uses that have gone on that no longer exist, what if we find a contaminant that we can't treat for? And what if, what, then what happens? Is there a Plan B? I didn't hear a Plan B. And, you know, certainly, we wouldn't want to contaminate our water source. So if we start pumping and we get something up there, and now we've contaminated, there are communities who have contaminated water sources. And people struggle to shower in the water because they know of the repercussions. The communities have to provide drinking water to all the residents. And the in the, the cost is enormous to fix. So I heard it, you know, and and I mean, quite frankly, I'm I'm pretty resolute. And if I don't have more information, my child cannot bathe in that water. And, you know, and I, and I say that with love, you know. I I previously had a lot of pride and a lot of love for for West Hans. I I'm just concerned, I don't want to come back in 10 or 15 years and hear something terrible. And that probably won't happen. But just based upon some of the feedback I got, that maybe a pause just to confirm some information before full steam ahead would be helpful or, you know, might be prudent. So, you know, just sort of trying to think of the best interest of all, because certainly, we're not out of water, yes. It's a hard year. It's a hard year. You know, and hopefully, going forward, there's lots of programming in lots of communities that are very proactive. And some of those have never even had to hit voluntary reduction yet, and they're drier than we are. But they they went into this with a plan that they institute every year. It's just a thing that's done. So I just wanted to kind of lay that out there, you know, because I, like I said, I I used to love this community. Now, I've got to tell you, my my experience has not been perhaps as good as I would have hoped. But that's okay. That is all I have to say for tonight, and thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, counsel, there's nobody else in the audience here. So we are, we have nothing, we're in camera. So our next meeting date is October 28, 2025, our regular scheduled meeting of counsel at 6:00 PM. With that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everybody, at 9:09 PM.